Good afternoon, everyone. Call to order this committee of the whole meeting for the Thompson Nicola Regional District for Wednesday, November the sixth, two thousand and twenty four. The TNRD acknowledges that we connect with many First Nations across our vast regional district, and today we are located on the Takamloops to Shaquetmak territory, situated within the unceded ancestral lands of the Shaquetmak Nation. The TNRD appreciates the partnership that we have with Takamloops to Shaquetmak and respect the land and territory on which we gather today. We have the minutes of the special committee of the whole meeting on November eighth, two thousand and twenty three.
Move the minutes.
Thank you, Vice Chair Smith, second by Director Blackwell. Thank you. Are there any errors or omissions? Seeing none on the question, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? That is carried. We move on to the first part of our two-part budget review session. This is looking at the two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty nine draft five-year financial plan report. Now, we do have a recommendation which does mention that it could be brought forward with changes. So discussing how best to do this, this will probably not apply this afternoon, which is the SWOT analysis from the different department heads. But tomorrow, when we do get down into the nitty-gritty of the budget, if people have changes that they want to see introduced, if they do not materially affect, if they're just punctuation, grammar, spelling, they don't change the intent of the document, those could be considered friendly amendments. There's no need to make a motion and have it seconded and voted on. If it is a more substantial motion to change the draft financial plan, then probably the easiest way would be to have a motion, have it seconded, and have discussion at that time to see what the will of the board is. And then staff will be taking note of any amendments which are approved, and they will be read back to us at the end and then incorporated into the document as amended. We felt that would be easier and cleaner than waiting until the end and discussing them all three hours after they were first raised. So we do have a recommendation. Do I have a mover and a seconder?
So move.
Move. Thank you. Director Middleton, seconded by Director Smith. Thank you. All right, and with that, I am going to hand the baton to CAO Hildebrand.
Thank you, Chair Roden. Good afternoon, everybody. Excited about a fun-filled afternoon and morning tomorrow for budget, I'm sure. So welcome, everyone, to the two thousand and twenty five provisional budget presentation. I say that and I laugh at the same time because this is just feels like we just finished this, and here we are again, twelve months later, starting all over again, so. Just gonna start with just the overview and the agenda that we're gonna go through today. So Barbara mentioned, our Chair Roden, mentioned that how we're gonna kind of work tomorrow when it comes down to the financials and the numbers. Today, you're gonna hear from all the departments. It's ten or fifteen minutes per kind of per department. We expect to kind of be relatively on time today and not go long. So we're gonna do our best to give you an overview and a SWOT analysis in each of those departments and what it looks like from a financial standpoint. We have one team member, Terry. She's on Zoom. I think she can hear me. She's going to present hers via Zoom. Everybody else will be here in the room. So just a couple opening thoughts, I guess, before we get going. So we're hoping to provide you with a very effective and efficient glimpse at some of the work and details that drive our financial plan. As always, we always do our best to share a realistic and accurate look at our current situation and where that future might go, and today will be by department. So I'm gonna start with the good news. So the good news is Carla and her team have developed a budget process that continues to get better and better every year. Significantly, significantly better, in my opinion. If you can imagine, we actually have some staff now that are enjoying budgets, so. That's a, it's a tough, it's a tough process, but we actually have some people that are excited. All of our departments and teams understand exactly what's expected of them and have worked really hard to deliver this budget, this provisional budget. We have had multiple meetings and budget reviews internally as staff, and we've also met with a number of you as board directors to walk you through some of those details and help understand parts of this massive budget that you're connected to. So the feedback so far has been quite positive. We've been working on this now for two months and have really done our due diligence. We've cut expenses where we could. We've deferred and changed projects that made sense while still aligning with the board's strategic plan. And most importantly, we got creative with, within departments and capital projects to try and deliver the best possible outcomes. So this has certainly been a challenge, but I'm proud of the progress we've made to date. We have been able to significantly lower the proposed tax rate from where we started two months ago to bring you, to bring you with the budget as it sits today. So now shifting to the more challenging parts of the budget. So we're still running up against significant costs and inflationary pressures that are enforcing us, forcing our budget increase in the wrong direction. We're not alone in this. I think all of you know how budgets are working across the province and what you're hearing and experiencing in the market. So it continues to be a struggle for sure. For us, decreasing revenues continue to be a huge problem due to competition, as you would have seen from some recent board reports. Interest rates, general market changes are all impacting our progress as we try to rebound. These factors are forcing us to review our fees, our contracts, and our application costs to try to enclose that gap. So although we feel that there's light at the end of this budget tunnel, we continue to struggle with a number of factors that are very real and not easily changed. Things such as negotiated salary increases for staff and increases for exempt and board members. Service contracts and contracts overall continue to go up. Inflation in utilities, insurance, insurance and other things that we deal with on a day. So business-like equipment and services that we use on a day-to-day basis continue to escalate. How we use our reserves and our surpluses will also continue to be a challenge as we try and balance using these these funds towards operations to reduce taxes, but at the same time, we're trying to ensure we have healthy reserves for capital and for unforeseen emergencies. So you're gonna hear a lot about that, mostly tomorrow, and a little bit today as well. So that all being said, that's all I really wanna say about the budget. So I wanna shift your thoughts to the future a little bit because this is something that senior management team and staff have been talking about internally. So think about two, three, five, even ten years out. And so more of a vision, then. We need to collectively find a way to start changing this tax cycle issue and start thinking more about how we can work smarter, leverage technology, increase efficiency, leveraging partnerships and shared services with other local governments, and just really do things differently and start thinking differently. Just recently, we hosted a CAO meeting here at the TNRD, and almost everybody was able to attend. So all the municipality CAOs were able to attend, and it was a really great discussion. We talked a lot about shared services and how we can work together more effectively, but it's such a huge undertaking. I just wanna walk through some of that for kind of future thinking. So one model that we have right now is we have all ten municipalities with the exception of Kamloops as part of an agreement right now for our GIS service, and it's been going extremely well. The mayors probably know about that and how that works, and staff, both from municipalities and through the TNRD are very happy about the way it's going. We were able to hire a new person. That split up amongst those ten municipalities. We're getting more done with less, and there's capacity again. So that's been going well. So that was kind of our first test. So now things like ERP systems and financial systems, HR, safety, IT, planning inspection, procurement, even advocacy. How can we do things more effectively and work, work together? So I know the CAOs are very interested in exploring this, but it's not gonna be easy. And there, so the issue would be it's a monumental change and commitment if we wanna get started on this. But I really feel like we need to try. I still envision a successful outcome with this one, but it's just how we get there. So some of the complement or complicating factors are things like we have eleven mayors in councils. We have this board. We have twelve staff teams throughout the whole region, different politics, different operational expectations and services. We need to consider resident feedback, legislation, and legal. There's just a whole bunch of challenges in front of us to kind of make this work. But given all these significant hurdles, I really do strongly feel that we can make this happen, and I'm pretty confident that CAOs amongst the regional district are aligned. So just a couple thoughts. So can you just imagine if we all ran the same ERP and financial system throughout the entire region and the efficiency we'd get? Imagine if we all rolled up budgets the exact same way or the same methodology and had similar expectations across the region. If we all procure services and equipment as a region, we all manage IT and cybersecurity in the same way, using the same technologies. Like, there's so many examples that the CAOs really wanna explore. But there's so many things we need to do in order to get there because many of us are running different financial systems. Many of us have contracts in place with consultants, all sorts of things. The one key message that really stood out was we feel like through a shared service, we could actually reduce the cost for our municipalities by upwards of fifty or sixty percent. Because some of the, the numbers that we're hearing from the municipalities that they're paying for IT services or safety services and all those things are unbelievably high, and we know we've got the capacity with the right arrangement to make it work. But please understand, I'm not standing here trying to bolster or make the TNRD bigger than it needs to. This is truly about thinking more like a business as much as we possibly can and doing things together that make sense. So it's just, I'm just thinking about going forward, how we need to do this, and some of the things our staff are thinking about and looking at. So I would encourage you all to give that some thought as we go through the process this year. Talk to your CAOs, talk to us as staff, and we'll continue to discuss this because I feel like there's just a huge opportunity here that we can't leave untapped. I think we certainly need to take a look at that from a, from a future sustainability standpoint. So with that, I'd like to pass it across to our first presenter. I think it's Colton. He's gonna walk us through, Monop Colton, the first part of the presentation. As far as questions go, as we break up the departments, if we can keep your questions departmentalized, so let, let Colton kind of go through the presentation, and if there's any questions about those slides, feel free to ask, and then as we shift to other departments, we'll do the same thing. So thank you for that.
Thanks, Scott. Do I need the clicker? Oh, there we go. Thank you. So I'm, got a few slides here. I think this was Scott's State of the Union. Oh, well, that wasn't me, but I'm wearing it now, aren't I? And a little too soon, yeah. Yeah, so we're, we're starting with our SWOT here. So administration is CAO's office, corporate and ledge services, people and engagement. My boss, Amanda, and people in engagement isn't here, so she asked me to present this on her behalf. So what I'm saying is if you have hard questions, I'll pass them on. Okay, so starting, I'm gonna spend the most time on the S in SWOT's strengths and accomplishments, because I was promised I would only get to talk about good things. But expertise and experience. In Amanda's note, she said, "We are awesome." "We've built a strong staff team. There's been lots of changes in recent years with things like retirements in senior manager positions." Most of the leadership team now has been established at the TNRD for probably the last one to four years and have established themselves in their roles. That's, you know, as, as you as a board would be able to tell. With succession planning, there's, there's been a lot of job postings, especially this year, I've noticed, where positions have been filled by promoting within after an external applicant search. So we haven't had a lot of vacancies this year. I've been pretty slow on the TNRD LinkedIn page putting those out. It probably looks like we've had more people leave based on the promoting within because when somebody gets promoted, now there's new opening to backfill that position after, after that kind of succession. Another note under people is collective agreement negotiations. So the BCG EU union employees contract was done last year. The QP contract was done this year, and those both expire at the end of next year for the TNRD. So many local governments, I think, remain unsettled with kind of their, those negotiations. So that's a certainty that, that we have, and I think that process, I wasn't involved, but it sounds like it went pretty smoothly for us. And then culture. So that's a strength of the TNRD right now. Positive relationships. Staff are productive and engaged, and retention is good within our, our departments. Recognition at UBCM. That was really what was supposed to hear for accomplishments. You were all there at UBCM. We received one of the top awards for our who does what and tax rate information, so that was, that was good news for us. We also featured the Nutsford community response team too with the line on operations and fire service with a kind of a made-in-the-TNRD program with UBCM and the wildfire service that's starting to expand next year. Just a little bit about our, our who does what. I was researching something recently and came across a Kamloops Daily News article from nineteen ninety-eight. The board was discussing the high cost of a colorful brochure that they were mailing to all forty-nine thousand homes at the time in the TNRD. And it was to coincide with the timing that the new ten million dollar civic building opened downtown, which is where we're in now. One of the area directors at the time, the area P director, actually, was quoted in the paper and said there's, that they needed to do it because there's a lack of general knowledge out there as to what we really do. So fast forward twenty-five years, and we're still trying to answer those questions for people. And I think we're doing a good job. I don't think you're ever gonna nail a hundred percent of everybody, but I think our, our efforts are working to expand that knowledge. So strategic plan and board alignment. We had a strategic plan progress update in July this year. That's on our strategic plan webpage on the TNRD site, so we are gonna be doing that twice a year. So I think the next one will be due in January to talk about the second half of two thousand and twenty-four. And then I think in February, there's the sort of midterm check-in on our strategic plan that the board wanted. First Nations relations. Everyone here knows about the MOU signed with SIMP and Takamloops. And our external relations team with Corbin and Scott are working on, I believe, four other MOUs with First Nation communities. And revised policies. So I checked in with Greg for the Coles notes on this earlier, and his words were, "We're not breaking the law." So he highlighted the work of our those were also his words. So we're statutorily compliant. He highlighted the work at the Policy Review Committee and that we have good depth and capacity with our staff right now to make sure that our policies are sound and compliant, as Greg said. So I know staff are working on an AI policy, for example, and other digital policies that I believe will be coming forward next year. Challenges for administration is our current technological systems, particularly for payroll, finance, and HR, which are outdated and, and lead to a huge workload of manual processes for our staff. Some systems also don't have two-factor authentication, so it's a security risk for us as an organization, and that potentially infects our options for cybersecurity and this insurance in this day and age too. Economy. We all know how the economy's been, so I don't need to spend a lot of time on that. Limited revenues. Alex and Jamie will probably talk more about the lack of economic activity impacting revenues in certain departments of the TNRD, particularly building, development, and solid waste, respectively. And the required taxation, the offset costs in a year like this. And costs of advocacy. So there's always a desire and a need for more advocacy for regional districts, but there's a need for more, but and not just greater of doing more of the same thing. So it's the board to decide how do we do that and how do we pay for it. Opportunities. Scott, in his State of the Union, talked about shared services, like in our GIS department, our, our building department, some of our technological systems. Fees and charges. So staff are updating, are reviewing outdated fees and charges that haven't been updated in a number of years. So I know specific departments will talk about that today in our, as we keep going. Scott mentioned our ERP software upgrade, and several teams have been working on that project. Again, that's particularly finance, HR, payroll systems that are taking a huge amount of staff time. And right now, there's a big risk, I think, associated with if any of those systems went down for any sort of downtime. Contract competition, the importance of getting the best pricing. Strategic plan execution. So as mentioned, we have been tracking how our work relates to, as staff, to the board's strategic plan, and we'll be doing another check-in in January and then February. Grant funding, the importance of offsetting project costs and improving our services with reducing the hit to the taxpayers, especially in an economy like this. First Nations relations, again, are ongoing discussions on MOUs and improving working relationships, generally speaking. And advocacy work as well. I know one particular opportunity that Corbin's working on is a grant, a grant-funded position for a summer student through the Canada Summer Jobs Program next year. Threats. Picture on the left, that was, I think, the Shetland Creek Fire from the summer, but depicting natural disasters. Obviously, that's a major risk for many TNRD residents and their livelihoods. From a TNRD operational perspective, busy EOC summers pull a lot of our staff away from their day-to-day work for weeks or months at a time. Asset management ties into this a lot to safeguarding our infrastructure and facilities. I know in two thousand and twenty-one, we had two eco-depos where we had mega fires burn right at the back of their property, and we almost lost those. The middle picture, the political climate. You saw the opening photo frame of the State of the Union photo there. So there's obviously a lot of concern with mistrust in, in governments in general these days from all levels. So I don't have to tell you, but that can, in a lot of places, obviously hugely impact recruitment or retention. The photo on the right is supposed to depict government downloading, something, again, that I don't really have to explain to anyone at this board, but again, that's increasing requirements for local governments without resources. So more work, more rules, and no or very little money for it, depending on what's being asked. I would, I heard this a lot when I was a journalist about government downloading, and now that I'm on the other side of it, working in local government, it's something that when you really see the nuts and bolts of it is pretty astronomical, the amount of government downloading that's happening to local governments all the time. I wanted to share this for a couple reasons. When I was researching and looking at news articles, so. Oh, I don't know if you can't see the date at the board here because of the thing up there, but take a look at the date, nineteen ninety-nine, and you could probably change the date to November two thousand and twenty-four, and a lot of the things in this article like that I've highlighted would still be accurate. Water, sewer, no other body that can go through to lobby for government funding to get these services nailed down. And concerns then from this board about government offloading, making the burden of the TNRD heavier, increasing responsibilities. So add that at the end of threats here, but wanted to include that twenty-five years later. So that's SWOT from the administration side of things. So I'll pass it to Carla, I think, here.
I like having to get to come up to the podium. It's blood flowing. Is this where we should get to stand up and stretch and do fun dances? And I could just see you guys. So I think, from my perspective, the success of being here with you guys today is part and parcel from teamwork. And I, I kinda treat my work here at the TNRD the same way I operate at home. And I know with my family and friends, and we often talk about this. My adopted great niece and I often say this together. Teamwork makes the dream work. And I actually truly believe in that. I believe that if we work hard together, that we can accomplish great things together. And I, I really do feel that we are doing that here. The challenge is that Scott captured a lot, and I'm not gonna restate what he has said, but the challenges that we face to just bring you status quo and make sure that you understand what you are adopting. I think when Colton was talking about making sure that people understand what the TNRD does, I resonate with that because I I strive to try and make sure that the board and the public know what we do and what we do financially, and part of the reason why we really focus on changing up the process to clearly communicate. I often say, seek first to understand. And our ability to sit here with you guys today, stand here with you today, is to help you understand so you can change things. You can agree, you can be informed, and you can communicate to your constituents effectively. The five-year financial plan and department, department presentations to the board and the public will help with understanding transparency, information sharing, in addition to assuring, ensuring that the board and our constituents can stand behind the organization and the financial needs to ensure long-term sustainability for the services that we are delivering to each of your areas. So I'd like to start by making sure that we understand what makes up the budget, and the work that we do is all to deliver the services that you guys require and desire in your areas. Some are for a better quality of life. Some are needed services that you couldn't really live without. Today's an opportunity for each of our departments to highlight what we have been able to accomplish, to put a spotlight on where we are heading, and give you a roadmap on how we believe the best way for us to get to where we need to. The approach to this plan that we're going to be going through, keeping in mind the current state of our economy and the past few years of increasing hardships, is to focus on stabilizing services, service levels at a rate that people can afford. I am constantly thinking about the economy, the hardships across the board that people are facing, and that I have a, an honor to work in an area that has to focus on bringing stable tax rates to people while everything else is going up at the same time. So coming and telling people that we're gonna have higher taxes, I take really very personally in what I'm doing. And what we're really trying to do and what I'm super excited about is the creative way that we have been thinking about doing business different, doing it differently. So upfront, investing into an ERP will change the face of this organization and how we work internally. It will improve customer service. It'll improve the efficiency and the way we work. And that is one way, I'm hoping, that we can start to do things more efficiently and effectively within, to not keep driving prices up and up and up. The focus is sustainability. The, the plan that we put in place involves reductions, new and creative ways of bringing a consistent service level. We're looking at a five-year plan that does not try to incorporate large increases to add an increased level of service. This plan is to attempt to find new and different ways. With this approach, we have found ways of reducing overall expenditures in many areas, but it still isn't bringing the rate down as much as we would hope to bring to our constituents. But we have done a very, very good job working together to find ways to do things differently and capture things a bit differently to bring you what we think is putting our best foot forward. This here is a room full of Scots. So we had a lot of fun on this day here, and I think it's one of my more proud moments of working in a place that we can have such fun and accomplish really great things together. Now I'm going backwards. Let's not do that. I will quickly run through the strengths that I feel we have right now in the finance department. We have updated numerous processes and forms, some of which you would have seen the effects of. EOC claims were two to three years behind. We have caught up all our EOC claims and process claims as the EOC is operating, and we're very current and efficient with that at this point. We've also built in resources and redundancy with staff to help with that. Updated budget process and budget integration with the finance system. We've enhanced the budget variance tool, so. To give you an idea of what that means is we actually extract the information out of our financial system because it doesn't work the greatest for us. And we have a way that our managers and staff that are involved in finance can go in and at any moment see their updated variances at a click of a button. Everybody's variance is in the same place. Everybody has access to all the same information. Everybody's variance is in the same place. Everybody has access to all the same information in, in a very timely manner. That wasn't the case before. We have a large shift from payments to, from check to electronic fund transfer. We have successful, been successful in over two and a half million dollars in grant applications. And I guess I should have started this to say, under the finance umbrella and the, under my purview of the department is the grants department and capital and facilities. Allocation of grant funds towards core infrastructure was quite successful when we met last year to start applying more grant funds to some of our core infrastructure. We have increased training and coaching support to other departments, bringing on a financial analyst within our ranks and an experienced finance manager has been extremely beneficial to educating our, our, not only our finance staff, but our, our budget managers and all the people that touch and work with finance, which is extremely important when you start implementing 10-year capital plans that have to be fully funded and attached to reserves and it gets very complex. And when only ever one person or two people are managing all of that, to try and spread that out and have more people involved requires a certain level of education. And the first year I was here, I was like drinking through a fire hose and I was trying to just educate myself on the TNRD. So training others was a little bit challenging. So I feel like I have support of two others with me to help support our department managers and general managers much better. And I, I do really feel that has been a value add to myself, which then in turn is a value add to you and what I can do and bring to you. Decreased payment turnaround time, which of course benefits us in many ways and customer service, implemented the reserve and surplus policy. I say implemented, it's created and it's coming to the board to be adopted. I got ahead of myself there saying implemented, hopefully implemented. Some of the areas of improvement for us we're focusing on are in our capital and facilities team, which is required additional resources, required asset management resource to support strategy and long-term planning, enterprise resource planning system, the ERP system, and, and implemented reserve and surplus policy with a funding shortage. I'm going to just give you a little deeper information on facilities. Some of you that I've met with, with the EA directors especially, this might be a little bit redundant because you've probably heard some of this already. So I want to make sure I share the same information with everybody. We have 12 libraries, mobile library, five eco depots, mission flats, four buildings. We have community halls, three fire halls, nine of them, 11 pump houses and two lift stations. And we have two people that are boots on the ground that deal with our facilities and all our capital project planning. And we introduced this subject last year and why it was in the five-year financial plan because it's a, it's an issue that has to be dealt with. So part of the reason why we're putting forward the facilities manager, which will be brought to you guys tomorrow for information. But that is why right now we have one person basically on call 24/7. We need to address that, that can't continue. We've waited a year and a half to try and deal with addressing that issue. That's why it's coming forward to you right now. So this is not to add anything to our service level. This is to try and meet the current need we have with the lack of resources that we have and making sure we don't burn out one or two people. What this would do is allow for the creation of a facilities manager and a capital manager. We right now have a proposed 15 capital projects for 2025 that are large. I think total about $12 million. And having one person dedicated to do that will help us more successfully be able to implement those projects and project manage, making sure that our general managers and other staff aren't trying to do that off the side of their desk. If you ever look at our capital plan and see how much we are able to accomplish every year of that capital plan, it's not close to 100% because we, we're dealing with a lack of resources to be able to do that. Required asset management resource to support strategy. You guys have seen presentations coming to you guys over the last year. We have had fit consulting, doing a lot of work there because we were planning to set the foundation of a strategy and updated policy to hand to an asset manager to help us ensure long-term asset management planning systems and accountability are happening within the TNRD. So that is something that was included in the five-year financial plan this year, fully recognized, or sorry, last year, and fully implemented into this draft budget that you're going to see. The enterprise resort planning system and luckily Colton talked a bit about that already. I won't go over that too much. It is looking like it's going to be about an 18-month planning. We have about three additional staff members, two within finance and one within IT. Our hope is that if we have and build some temporary champions here and we do get to go into a shared services agreement, this might support some of that work in the future. So we are planning our own system and to get that up and running with the hopes that also, once that's up and running, this could benefit our shared services. That seems to be a very, very likely potential for us. Implemented reserve and surplus policy. Right now there is a funding shortage in that and you will see that when that presentation comes forward of how we're going to try and start to build up our reserves appropriately to fund right now what we know is a shortfall. Some of the ongoing concerns, just touch on that software, system reliance, maintaining service levels with the rising costs, resources to support finance, the budget management and planning staff, increasing inflation, the large amount of capital projects which are reliant on grant funds and to make sure that we still have grant funds, make sure we still have community works funds coming our way for core infrastructure, ensuring that there's reserves to support long-term planning, asset management prioritization, which is also something that is required to access the grants that we do get from UBCM. So I'm going to end on opportunities. It's a sandwich technique, good, bad, bad, good. So I, I believe we, I am very lucky that you allow me to work with such great people beside me. I think we do well and we've heard that through a couple of people already so far. Collaboration and communicate with the communications department has, our alignment in my work with Colton and the time that we invest into the communications of finance, I think, has been extremely valuable to us and to you guys. I do use it when I talk with CAOs, when we meet with the CFOs, when our front desk staff get calls. What are you charging for? Why? And I always call it the menu of your services. So each person can go look and actually see exactly what they have as services and what they are paying for. And we always put out the offer to not only you, to others, to people out in the community, that if they really want to work to understand that we will make time to meet with them. We have improved visuals and presentations, improved customer service, internal and external. We are focusing on that shared services opportunity, which I really feel like if we could get the entire TNRD region, municipalities, TNRD, the, the, not only the, the politicians, everybody that's in those positions, but also the staff aligned, that, that might be award-winning. That might be something to strive for because I haven't seen it done. And I would love to be a part of that. And special efforts in our system optimization to do more with what we have. That's me. I'm going to turn it over to Terry, who I think is online.
Hello. Is everybody able to hear me okay?
We can, and I can just tell me when to advance the slide for you.
Beautiful. Thank you so much. I thank you, everybody, for the opportunity to present our SWAT analysis for our budget for the year. You can go ahead and go on to the next one. So some of the strengths that the Film Commission has is that we do have a very comparable budget to other regional film commissions in British Columbia of similar sizes. Where we are mostly funded through the TNRD and through the province, through Creative BC, but we also take advantage of leveraging the grants that are out there as well to bring in a budget of around $480,000 worth of expenses. But then we estimate that we bring in approximately $24 million worth of influence and influx of economic development into our region with the film industry with that budget. I'm very proud that the Film Commission also supports various other facets of the TNRD. For example, our resource base or Explore TNRD Image Library that a lot of individuals will be utilizing and do utilize. We've recently been approached by Kamloops to set up an account so that they might utilize some of our, our image base. So very happy to be able to offer those services above and beyond what our film, Film Commission does on a regular basis. Super, super stoked about our three-year strat plan that has been finalized this year. That's really already given us a lot of direction and improved our services already for what the locals are looking for as far as film industry development and supporting external inquiries for film industry professionals as well. And I'm ready for the next one. So weaknesses that we face, we are still lacking in infrastructure. I don't consider that to be a huge weakness, other than it is probably our biggest barrier for really spurring development and growth. So if we are wanting the film industry to drastically grow in our region, that is something that we would love to see happen would be the infrastructure being built within our region. I think that it could still be very successful. And I am working on conversations with investors as well as locals that are interested in learning more about what that would do as far as stimulating the economy here locally. I have a pretty small team, so it's me and one other full-time person and then a part-time person. So currently I am at a convention promoting film industry and bringing people into our region for their film productions. And I have thankfully one person that's back at the office to support me with that. All the other inquiries that are coming in. So right now we have a scout that's out showing a production right now, various areas around the, the region, trying to entice them to come to our area. So very thankful that I have somebody to help me do that so that I can be proactively marketing at this convention that I'm at. With that being said, there's a lack of coverage when it comes to vacation or sick time. So it is just basically one person running the show when somebody takes, takes any time away. And so we do have some threats. So there has been discussions with the, with the province, the Ministry of Tourism, Arts and Culture, Sports, all the good fun things. They are talking about bringing our funding level back to what it was previously, which is definitely a threat to us because we want to continue to grow. And if they are doing a clawback, that will, that will affect us and we won't be able to continue the level of service that I strive for. So it's, it's also difficult to maintain those service levels with the, with the rising costs and with a rising inflation. And our demands continue to increase. So they, we're able to track that. The, the regional tax incentives are increasing every single year through the BC tax incentive. We can show those statistics going up. And yet our funding from the province either remains the same or we've been very fortunate in the last couple of years to have it doubled, but they are talking about bringing it back down to the previous level of $45,000, which is about the same of what we have been receiving for the last 20 years. And the next slide. So opportunities, there's always new proactive marketing opportunities that continue to come up. As I mentioned, I am at a convention this year right now. And this is the first time that we've been able to attend a convention in, in over four years since before COVID. So I'm making some fabulous connections and people that have never heard of our area and are now really excited about the potential to come and film within the TNRD. There's always new grants that are on the horizon that I continue to apply for. For example, funds that we were able to receive to purchase our green battery generators that we can now roll out to make our, our film productions that more green and that more quiet. And I'm really, really hoping that we can hire scout photographers through, throughout the regions so that we are not necessarily utilizing so much fuel to transport people from the center hub of, of Kamloops, but we have hopefully boots on the ground throughout the entire region that can photograph our, our region spectacularly and beautifully. And that's it for me. So I really appreciate the opportunity to chat with you today virtually.
Thank you, Terry. Chair Roden, we didn't really stop between Corbin, myself, Carla and/or Terry. So is there any questions so far? I would assume people would put their hands up. So I'll pass it to Chair Roden.
Director Gens.
Thank you. This is for finance. I just have a question. Carla, we talked about, or you talked about the $2.5 million in grants. Were they a designated grant like hard assets where you, they had to be for a certain item? Or were some of them soft assets where you could use them for whatever you want? And I'm just wondering what the grants were for and how they were used. I don't want to catch you flat-footed here, but I'm just wondering what they were used for and if they were, or they were designated.
Thank you. Through to the board. There are a large number of different grants that make up that total, some of which are the, the Canada Summer Student Grants. There is a report coming to the board that is going to describe all of the grants that we received on the fly. I'm not sure. I was looking back at Austin because Austin oversees the grants portfolio. And I don't know if he has more detailed information that he'd like to share.
Is there anything that you wanted with the grants that we've received so far? Oh, just the grants that we've received this year of that two and a half million that you talked about. Do you know the specifics of some of them?
Through the chair. So a big portion of that, some of the grants that we receive every single year. So that would be like, for example, the library operating grant that we receive, which is about $300,000. A portion of that would also be the Canada Community Building Fund, which all of you are quite familiar with. And then there's also a lot of smaller grants. We receive infrastructure grants through the provincial government that help us to supplement water systems or our fire halls. We, we have a, a lot of smaller grants as well, like the Canada Summer Student Program, which allows us to bring in a film student every single year. And we're looking at potentially, as was alluded to earlier, bringing in another student for that one for the advocacy that we do. Another example of a grant that we are working on right now is the final reporting for the Community to Community Grant, which helped us to support the two recent MOUs that were signed. There, it's quite a large portfolio because a lot of these grants are, are smaller and not big dollar amounts and they help us to do smaller programs like the Community to Community MOU signing. And as Carla mentioned, we will bring you a report that'll detail all of those grants and which category of funder they fall into and what they were used for.
Director, Director Sarai.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just another question for finance. You talked about the FTE that we may be looking for to fill that position. Would that be, I guess, the answer for the first question, I'll probably answer the second one. Is that a succession that internally going to come through TNRD? Are we going to look outside and are we confident that there's somebody out there that would fill that position in a timeline that you need?
Thank you. Through to the board. So there's two positions that we're putting forward. One is the asset manager and one is a facilities manager. Are you specifically asking about one of those? Both of them? So they will be posted positions and I, I'm fairly confident that the facilities manager will happen, you know, in a reasonable amount of time. Right now I haven't looked at the industry around asset management. Certainly the qualifications of a person that we want to bring in would be someone a bit more diverse than what we have on our. would be someone a bit more diverse than what we have on our team. So a little bit of a different educational background that we all bring to the table. And right now, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that one. That one could take a little bit longer. But there's definitely lots of different municipalities and local governments out there that have asset managers. And, you know, hopefully, what I've seen too, as I'm stammering here, but what I've seen as well is there are a number of people that become asset managers for local government that have worked in the civil field or they are working, doing contract work in asset management and lots of times come over to local government. So I think there's going to be the opportunity. Our recruitment for that one might take a little bit longer. Director Sal.
Thank you, Chair. Through to CFO Fox. Regarding the ERP rollout, I understand, you know, our CEO Hildebrand earlier mentioned we're not trying to expand, you know, ourselves, our government, and increase overheads. But the ERP would bring in a lot of efficiencies and reducing the workload. I was just wondering if you would be able to give us some like savings in terms of headcounts because of the reduced workload or any potential numbers for the ones we rolled out the joint services, or sorry, the shared services offered to municipalities, you know, potential revenue so that we can bring it back to taxpayers so that when right now we tell them, oh yeah, it's going to be, you know, a million-dollar investment here, we can say to our residents that, you know, with that being said, we're going to save this amount in the future. That's one question. And I've got a second one.
Yeah, thank you. Through to the board. So our approach really with an ERP system isn't for the replacement of individuals. It's really focusing on, we're very reactive. And if you can imagine there, in being a reactive work environment, you are always dealing with what's right in front of you and there's not a lot of planning. So I think that the work that we'll be able to do are a lot of, capturing a lot of the things that will enhance our service to you. It'll add more value, maybe go after a lot of the things strategically that the board often is, what I think about is with grants and grant opportunities. And lots of times, the resources that we have internally, very internally focused on helping there. One of the opportunities maybe with these third-party areas where we know that we're being a little bit pushed on is we'll have more internal resources to help support and find grant opportunities for others. So mine is more about finding efficiencies within the organization and capturing opportunities where I feel like we're rushed and not adding the value that I would like to see us adding. Beyond just the ERP system, I take for an example invoice processing and invoice processing times. So the amount of time that it takes us to, or so the number of times, I think we touch an invoice twelve times in the process, especially since COVID. Everything went digital, so it has to move from one folder to another folder to another. There's invoice management system that's part of the ERP process that literally takes it and automatically sends it around. So I see us being able to capture there. And I've had to, since I've started, because of E O C, if you can imagine the emergencies that happened over the last three years prior to this last year, the amount of money that we were capturing through E O Cs and E O C claims. As soon as that happens, all of that work fell on the finance team that was there. That was a huge amount of work that ended up taking extra staff to address. We want to make sure that we have processes in place that are documented processes. Most time we work away, we don't document anything. And then people leave and no one knows. So we're trying to build in redundancy and make sure that we have staff available to address that. Since I've come on board, I've had to have two casuals, two to three casuals supporting the finance department to address the workload that has been there from the beginning. So what we're hoping is that that extra support will no longer need to be there. So that, you know, that there is some savings there, but it's not targeted reductions of people.
Thank you, CFO Fox. So yeah, I'm just gonna, if you can confirm, so if I get asked by residents, you know, to justify these projects, I can say that, yeah, we're capturing more grant opportunities that would have been missed. And also, for example, E O C, we're not having to bring in extra staff for those temporary operations.
Yeah, so I would say the amount of casual time overtime reduction, there strategically, we would benefit from that because there's a huge amount of overtime that has been experienced by our workers. We're also trying to address that in areas where we've had to add positions like facilities management where targeted reductions were made a number of years ago and all that work fell to a number of people. So what we've been doing is we haven't been able to accomplish the plan that you're approving because we haven't had the resources to actually do that. So hopefully, we'll be able to more successfully incorporate those things. But I know those aren't probably targeted things that your residents would understand. Certainly, what I would say too is if you want to reach out directly and I can give you some wording as well, that might help.
Thank you, CFO Fox. And sorry, one last, one more question regarding the, sorry, the Asset Management, Asset, Facilities Manager would be in charge of the capital projects?
The Facilities Manager would be in charge of all facilities management. The Capital Manager would be in charge of all of the capital project implementation. And there's a large number of capital projects that take for instance Tyrone and Utilities has to manage a lot of his own capital projects because we do not have the resources to support what he needs in protective services in the fire department. A lot of that project management falls on Jason because we don't have the resources to be able to support that. So the Facilities Manager would specifically look after all the facilities. The Capital Manager would look after the capital and also work with the Asset Manager on long-term asset management replacement plans.
Thank you. In that case, I'm just wondering for the Capitals' Projects Manager, if there's any consideration to have that as a contract, based renewing contract basis? Because I'm just foreseeing, yes, right now we have a whole pile of backlog of capital projects. But in the future, as we finish these projects, I wonder if, you know, that would give us more flexibility to, yeah, when we don't have as much workload in that area.
Over to you. So right now, if you can imagine, all those facilities I've listed out, we have two people and we have a pending retirement over the next couple of years. There right now is no redundancy. So you can only imagine as soon as one person is sick and the elevator breaks, the garage door breaks, we have one person right now, the department itself cannot function appropriately with two people. It is putting us, it is forcing us to put staff in a position they shouldn't be put in, that they're putting themselves out, out of their family to address our issues at any time we need them, which is a problem in itself. So that one there for me goes a little bit more beyond adding, you know, an extra service. This is going to allow us to take somebody who's doing more than one job right now and more than expected because they're dedicated to fairly treating them and putting proper resources to a job that's needed. There might, there could be further comments though from Jamie as far as the contracted portion.
Thanks. Yeah, through the chair, just one quick comment, I guess, on that. The model of contracting out the project management for capital was our practice prior to creating that position. I think it was created in 2014. And at that time, the rationale for creating that position was the amount of work in the capital planning process through the five-year budget. And we're still in the same position now. I would say is that the amount of capital work in the plan is still more than what one person can do. So we are already, when Carla mentioned that departments will have, still are looking at, are managing some capital projects themselves, are having to do that through contracted services. So and maybe just a comment on this discussion. This report is going to the board tomorrow for consideration. So that would probably be a better time to dive into further discussion on it.
Thank you very much.
Director Middleton.
Thank you. And I think my question may have been partially answered just in one of the other questions that was posed. But just when we look at shared services, so the TNRD becoming a little bit of a stick handler, shall we say, of a lot of things that need to be done at many different levels, including the smaller municipalities. Grant writing, and I'm not too sure, you know, what our capacity is or is that already considered to be a shared service? Or is that something that we can offer as a shared service? And not wanting to suggest that somebody, you know, has capacity or time, is grant writing a shared service?
Through the chair to Director Middleton. It's not considered, but although we still try to make it work for third parties and people that are asking for assistance or direction on where they can look. That was actually a discussion at the C A O meeting as well, where we actually had somebody present that is a grant writer that would offer that services because I have CEOs asking me all the time is, who do you know that's a grant writer? We need help with this. So we gave them some resources, but I could see that being an opportunity for shared services going forward. I know Ainsley, our grant writer, is certainly at capacity and doing a great job, but we still try to help out where we can. But I see a future of expanding that capacity even more.
Anyone else have any questions or comments for the people who have already spoken? All right, we will move on to that seventies-tastic design. I'm having flashbacks to avocado-colored appliances for some reason, burnt orange. So over to Judy Moore to give us an analysis of the T N R L.
Thank you, Chair. We're very proud of that logo as we are the 50th anniversary. So I want to begin my comments, remarks this afternoon by saying a big thank you to all of the board members. I know many of you went out to library events this past month and we literally had hundreds of residents out across the TNRD. And I'm very proud to say that libraries, big and small, hosted events. And it's a big effort from my team, but just absolutely joyful. So thank you very much for stepping into those events. So similar to my colleagues' presentations previously, I'm going to be doing my SWOT analysis here for the library. Okay, come on, come on, come on. There we go. So I want to begin by just doing a little bit of a flyover of the various accomplishments and I'm not going back to 1974. Instead, just really this last year and highlight for you some of the various initiatives that my team has been involved in. So first off, the Aberdeen Tiny Library. We are so incredibly proud of that 350 square foot space. It opened not quite a year ago and it's really packing a big punch. It's been our jumping off point for us to be able to engage with residents of South Kamloops and for them to really see a real library. You know, the key in providing library services to have one in urban settings, usually within four kilometers of one another. And the fact that we don't have a South Kamloops library or hadn't had anything present prior to the A T L meant that people might not come down to downtown. They might not patronize the North Shore Library, so very proud of that. We're also really proud of the Community Service Officer Contract. And just to take a little trip down memory lane, back in 2022, we began a pilot project. We were seeing what was happening with the city in terms of the changes to their bylaw officer and those bylaw officers moving into community service roles. It really tweaked our interest because we were having real issues at the North Shore Library. People who are coming into our facility, homeless, people with substance issues, mental health issues and whatnot. And seeing what the community service officers and the role that they were beginning to play, which had to do with that hybrid of bylaw enforcement and really connecting people to services and getting to places where the library just doesn't go. So things like a situation table, I'd never heard of the situation table before. And that's a place where, you know, community services work with one another to provide best situation and best care to people who are in crisis. So we've signed a five-year contract. Terrific support from C A O Hildebrand, from our CFO Carla. And we're very excited. So that contract, of course, is for the Civic Building as well as the North Shore Library for a period of five years. Public engagement, we launched two big surveys this last year, one on the library services hours here in Kamloops and one at the Aberdeen Tiny Library. So what resulted from the Kamloops Library Service Hours was the public really wanting us to open Sundays. So through a great deal of work, looking at an evaluation of our hours, data-driven, and of course, all that really meaningful feedback, we were able to move forward with Sunday hours of operations. And that began in September for both our North Shore and our downtown libraries. Aberdeen Tiny Library Survey, you'll hear lots about that. I might reserve comment until the committee of the whole where I'll be coming back December the 13th. But lots of really, really great feedback from residents in the South Kamloops area. Increased membership and digital print usage. So I kind of, I like stats a little bit. I think it helps to tell the story. But for the period of January 2023 to this January, so kind of for one year, we were up 11.8% in terms of membership and that equated to something like 6,800 new members in that time. So we know that our engagement work efforts are really paying off and I think we're quite successful. You'll find this interesting. So digital, what's happening with digital? E-books and audiobooks were up 26%. So that too is very significant in a one-year period as compared to print usage, which was at about 2%. I like to hearken back to our facilities master plan, which was renewed and approved back in 2022. And it really is our launch pad and our jumping off point for pointing to those various facility projects that we really want to get going on and helps guide our decisions. We received in the last two years 1.2 million dollars over top of any other ground funding that we enjoy annually. So Austin mentioned the 350,000 that the library gets as a payment from the province. This was additional. So I think collectively, our library advocacy efforts with the province, and that's chief librarians and library boards advocating, it resulted in us getting that 1.2 million, which was great. And with that, and no strings attached, it's enabled us to begin with our R F I D implementations. So radio frequency identification and our tagging and really to create those efficiencies and innovations. I think it's also important to note that when you gave me mandate, and that's going back to August of 2023, 2022 for the Aberdeen Tiny Library, the costs were all borne for that year through that grant. So it really enabled us to kind of get going. So that was the lease cost, it was the startup cost for, you know, outfitting the branch, et cetera. So we've done very well with grant funding. And I think all of us senior managers are very pretty savvy, trying to maximize where we can to, you know, support Ainsley in doing the work that she does, looking after various grants. Last January, we also launched our Sun Peaks Mobile Library Pilot. So we had been visiting Sun Peaks, I think it was once every three weeks and intentionally because we know that Sundays is a really busy day in the libraries, is very busy, that we committed to providing Sunday service every Sunday using the mobile library up to Sun Peaks. So that kind of summarizes for you a bit of a taste of some of the projects that we've been undertaking and. been undertaking and some of our accomplishments and strengths. So weaknesses. I see a typo there, weakness, weaknesses. Okay, what's that? There's only one weakness, and that's the weakness that's up there. So we have done some initial analysis just in terms of libraries across the province, and we are on the lower funding level. So I think that that's something that will be coming up, just so that board members are aware that we fall a little bit short on what our comparators would be, the Vancouver Island Regional Library, the Okanagan Regional Library, Fraser Valley, Caribou, et cetera. So we'll bring that forward again for you. Mobile library challenges. So we had a 2018 build, mobile library. It challenges us with very costly repairs. You know, we have fairly sophisticated hydraulics, and it's off the road, and in my view, a little bit too often in terms of some of those repairs. I think as well, parking, I did bring that to the board's attention a couple of years ago, where it's currently located with as big a vehicle as it is, it presents issues in terms of backing it up and parking it and whatnot. And I would say, just fair comment, just parking in general. Anytime we think to, you know, move a mobile library stop, we really have to check out to see whether or not we can actually park, whether it's level, if it's level, or there's sufficient space to actually pull it through. Parking that beast is quite the job. And two, staffing. So I know that in terms of going out to find new mobile library drivers, we want to have that person who's a library person, a driver, but we really, we have problems in terms of recruiting for that position as the mobile library driver because of the air brakes requirement. So it's not just a regular vehicle, a minivan that you go and, you know, throw your keys in the ignition and away you go. Yet it does present problems for us. So Sunday hours of operation here in Kamloops, very excited about those. We move forward with it. We know that it's very busy. Both of our libraries are very busy, hit the nail on the head there, but we did have some turnover. So we did advise staff back in June of the changes and whatnot, and, you know, worked with the BCGU in terms of schedules, et cetera. But despite best efforts, we did wind up having some people sever employment with us. So that was, you know, we're coming through the end of this cycle in terms of hiring, but it needed to be identified as a bit of a weakness. And I think when I reflect on my urban libraries counterparts in bigger municipalities like Calgary and Edmonton and Toronto, they're having the same issue with Sundays. Somehow, it's a challenge to staff up for Sunday hours. And I need to underscore this, and you'll keep hearing me say this, just in terms of that requirement for a South Kamloops library, we are underserving residents of South Kamloops, so without a full-service library. So, yeah.
Could you have been a little bit more or less subtle on that one? I don't know.
No, I thought I just had slide out. I was working with our communications person on this. Of course, overdue is library lingo. Put that big overdue stamp over top of a project, and I think it kind of hits the head of the nail. So threats, I'm going to talk a little bit about threats, and then I'll talk about opportunities, and like my colleagues, leave it on a positive note. So of course, we have, as our number-one priority, to seek out lands and opportunities for South Kamloops for the development of a library. So what has happened here? COVID, lots of net migration here into Kamloops. We have a lack of lands to begin with, and that combined with high real estate and construction costs, it's, what can I say? It's a threat. I put this down and talked about with colleagues, and I think as an organization, library being maybe just a little bit different in terms of arts and culture and city services, and where we are missing terribly the Kamloops this week, delighted with, and early days with Kamloops Chronicle. But I think the lack of local media really hampers our ability to get our message out regarding programming and all of the various events that we have. We're not alone in that, but it has to be noted. Recruitment and retention of staff, I think that's something, and it predates our Sunday opening hours. I think we are all experiencing this as a result of the pandemic and changes in demographics, which became really acute. But we, you know, we're in that constant cycle of recruiting, and, you know, I think that one of our threats is talent retention. So we certainly want to keep our people and go the distance to train and really provide, you know, a really awesome work experience for them. The last two, and you may remember the presentation that Jim Turk gave at the last board meeting, talking about censorship and intellectual freedom. This has become very real in terms of protest and polarization and its effect on libraries. So it's not unusual to see protests. It's not unusual for libraries to have people wanting to censor library materials, people getting upset, fortunately not us, but at this point, program rooms, people taking exception to displays. So we know that in 2025, one of our tasks is going to be to update our policies. So we'll be working with Greg Lewis on that, and those will be coming forward to the board. And finally, on this slide is the community issues. And I think that, you know, we always have to be mindful of making sure that it's top of mind to keep a safe and welcoming space for all of our staff and all of our visitors here in Kamloops. We're really lucky now with the community service officers. We're down significantly, and by significantly, probably more, less than half the number of incidents that we would have had previously. So awesome, but we need to always keep an eye on what's happening in our communities outside of Kamloops as well. Boy, I like that badge. Okay, so being that we've celebrated our 50th anniversary, I think have done a really great job in terms of community engagement. It's now our next step to work on creating a library strategic plan that's aligned with the TNRD strategy as well. So we'll begin work on that and laying the groundwork on that shortly. And as a operational priority, it will be for 2025. Talked a lot about facilities, battery questions to Carla regarding that. Ian Delgleish works so professionally and hand-in-glove with the library. I don't know what we'd do without him, but we would like to clone him. He is one person, but we're very excited, and I know that this is coming forward to the board in terms of contract award for the Clearwater Library Refresh. And I believe that's tomorrow. On the books for us up ahead is updates to our North Kamloops library space. And it's always been my perspective that we need to have terrific children's and teen spaces. I think, and this will warrant further discussion at the Committee of the Whole, but that we want to enhance our North Kamloops library space for many reasons, one of which is that we've done little to that space since it opened. It's seeing real evidence of wear and tear, and it's not an attractive space. And, you know, as we look at our other libraries and the enhancements, it's a bit of a sad cousin, and it's in a corridor where we need to have strength of library. So that one will be coming forward. We're going to continue to work on opportunities for South Kamloops library, and I'm excited that we'll be bringing something forward to the Committee of the Whole December 13th as well. And finally, we have technology. Boy, do we have technology. RFID, we're tagging library materials. So in discussions with Jenny Abramczyk, my colleague, and her direct report, Wendy Buffal, who's the supervisor of processing, they've tagged into the hundreds of thousands of library materials to date. I know that Wendy was heading out to Merit today to work on the RFID project, but we've already undertaken work here in Kamloops. We're finished, Blue River, Logan Lake. So we've been getting around the community. We're playing beat the clock on this project, just because weather is not on our side up ahead, so we want to make sure that everybody's safe on the roads and we're able to finish that project. Vending machines, hold lockers, and service extender are all things that are incredibly innovative, and I think with RFID and our collection fully tagged, it'll make it easy to deploy and really capitalize on some really key technology. There we have it. So our hold locker and our dispenser, Aberdeen Tiny Library. So. All right, we're not getting older, we're getting better. So here's to the next 50th. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention, first, I see Director Ranta, the Canopy Service, which has recently been added. I was just taking a look, and I took a look earlier because I was intrigued, Criterion Collection, anyone who knows the Criterion Collection knows they are absolutely stunning overview of world cinema, and they have dozens upon dozens of Criterion Collection DVDs available. You can take out up to 16 a month for free, which is just, not that I'd be counting, but no, they're, and that's just some of what's on offer, and I think it's just another way that the library service is providing something that, I don't know, do video stores even exist anymore? Even streaming services, if you look, you know, they consider anything made before 1992 a classic film. So Criterion Collection allows you to go back to the very beginnings of cinema and see some absolutely incredible films you just don't get on Netflix or Hulu or Amazon Prime or any of the streaming services that you pay $7.99, $11.99, $15.99 a month for, and Canopy is absolutely free through the TNRL. So I think that's absolutely awesome, and I just wanted to mention it. There was a press release that came out two days ago, so go check it out. You will find some fantastic stuff on there. Director Ranta and then Director Sarai.
Thank you, Chair. Judy, I'm just wondering if, because we have a major library right down below us here, and we've got a major library in North Kamloops, and everything I've heard over the last year is that the little library up at Aberdeen is doing very well. Is it really necessary to spend millions of dollars building a new library, accessing land, and building a South Kamloops library? Is that totally a necessity, or are we good enough the way we are?
Through to the board chair, Director Ranta. So we've gone through a process, having our Tiny Library Pilot Project, a demonstration of what a library could be for South Kamloops. We, well into the year-long effort that we've had, at about the six-month mark, we launched a public survey. So postcards went out to residents of South Kamloops, asking for feedback on the Tiny Library and what their need for library services is. So Tiny Library, fantastic. You know, Mike Brown and the team that helps him to deliver is doing a fantastic job. But what we heard from residents was, we need a bigger library, we need a bigger collection, we need programming. So one of the things that we're really unable to create for the public is kind of that regular programming and access to computers, et cetera, which, you know, we have in our, well, within all of our libraries across the RD, and hours, so hours of operation. So currently, we're at that 16 mark. So that's part of the answer to your question. So when we start, you know, contemplating what our path forward looks like, we will bring to the board for consideration something that I believe could only be obtained through potentially a partnership. So, you know, I think, I think you're quite right, Director Ranta. You know, we've talked about, discussed, you know, properties that are running into the millions and millions of dollars, builds that are much higher than that, and I think that we need to get really creative. So I am committed to bringing forward solutions that are creative, but at that same time, addressing the needs for a full library service in South Kamloops.
CEO Hildebrand, do you have something to add?
Just to add, if I could, thank you, Chair Roden. I think Director Ranta hit that one on the head, and that's something that we're taking very seriously. And as Ms. Moore had mentioned, it's something that years ago, when we sat down, it made great sense to go find property and build this library, and we had many meetings and discussions about it, but it's just not feasible in today's market. And we have a, we feel like we have a different solution that I think would make a lot of sense. So we're going to bring that and have a full discussion on that on December 13th at a Committee of the Whole, get direction from the board, and then be able to hopefully shift gears when it comes to the library.
Director Sarai?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm looking forward to that discussion. I'm just curious, when you talked about the North Shore Library, the poor cousin of, is there any chance, and I'm not sure if we've looked into it before, are we allowed to get sponsorships from the Highland Valleys, the CNs, to help with upgrading libraries to get their name on it or in a reading room? Are we allowed to do that?
Through the board chair to Director Sarai, yes. And in fact, we had already reached out to a fairly major, more private donor, not government funding, for that project. And it's, we will build upon that to undertake that type of work. But I think that, you know, we may need to review naming policies, et cetera, as they relate to the public libraries. Thank you.
Just supplemental, I think the North Shore, as everybody's aware, if they're not, it's one of the fastest-growing areas of our town, and the development there is second to none, and the North Shore BIA would be more than willing to sit down with you and seek out funding for that, because what enhances that library will also increase residents' enjoyment of that area. So I think it's a good fit for everybody to see that get remodeled.
Through the board chair, thank you for your comments. And Jeremy Heighton is higher on our list, and we have engaged with him before, but thank you for the feedback.
And just a quick comment, that this is the only department or library that's got a charitable donation status, so we can certainly look at that as well, and wanted to put that out there.
Any other questions for Ms. Moore? All right, thank you very much. And we'll take a quick break, so everyone can go have a coffee and treat and use the facilities if they need to, and we'll see you back here in five minutes. and use the facilities if they need to. And we'll see you back here in five minutes. All right, everyone, we are back and it looks like we are welcoming Mr. Kraus to the podium. So you're up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're just getting the PowerPoint back. Library was such a happy topic. And here I am with my three-headed dragon. Development Services. So I'll be talking about building inspection, planning and bylaw enforcement as it relates to building and planning, so zoning and the building bylaw. And I'll be covering all three in my full analysis rather than individually. So starting with some positives and strengths, and specifically in planning. I've had a really busy year this year. Two quite large official community plan projects underway. We just wrapped up 10 community meetings in October. And so that project will carry on into next year, but it's going very well to begin with. Housing Needs Report, that was provincially required project due at the end of this year, so December 31st. And we're doing that and coordinating it regionally with nine of our member municipalities. So that'll be coming to the board by December. RGS Monitoring Report is something we're required to do as well. We do it every two years. We'll be bringing that forward in December as well. So we did receive some provincial funding and that funding is covering the official community plan projects. It covered the housing needs report. And so that allowed us to save a little bit on our project budget, which was first planned for. We didn't know we would get this provincial funding. We received it, I think, in January of this year. And so building permits themselves, the application fees we get are based on construction values. So the lower the construction value. The lower our application fees are or the less revenue we get. So each year I look into my crystal ball and put a picture of it up there. And I try to predict. What the application numbers will be and what that revenue will be. Of course, it's not easy. And I didn't predict a 35% decrease last going into this year. Had I predicted correctly or had I been more optimistic? I guess less optimistic. And we had a relatively steady year, then we would have essentially overtaxed. So it's really hard. It's a fine line to try to find that balance. And so we are going to be using those reserves to ensure no impact to taxation. That's what we're recommending. And frankly, that's why we have a reserve. In previous years, and I just looked like the last four years. So since 2020, we transferred over 700,000 into reserve. In 2020 alone in building, we had a surplus of 900,000. So those really good years and those transfers that happened. Offset years where we have decline without impact to taxation. So this year has been a down year, but I think we have to look at it in context, especially in recent years where we've had significant surplus. It's not all bad news. Other challenges, as my colleagues alluded to as well, higher labor costs, that's going up. Legal costs are rising. That's in the context of enforcement. Significant windshield time. Last year, we calculated that our inspectors, just our building inspectors. Put on about 120,000 kilometers. That's cumulative total 120,000 kilometers. So it's really costly to provide this service over 45,000 square kilometers. We're looking for efficiencies. We're grouping inspections wherever we can. But expectations are also rising. People don't want to wait weeks for an inspection. They want that service quickly. So how do we provide? A high-quality service without driving two hours to do one inspection. So that's the part we're always grappling with. We're always looking to reduce expenditures, find efficiencies. We did that last year. We're going to do it again this year. And we're also in the process of renewing our municipal service, building inspection service contracts. And looking at an increase there, which I'll mention in a moment. In terms of threats. Economic uncertainty continues to linger. Yes, interest rates are starting to come down, but what we're hearing from a lot of builders. Going into 2025 is that they're waiting for more of these cuts to see where it settles before rushing into projects. So what will this mean for revenues in 2025? I don't know exactly yet, but we're budgeting more conservatively than we did last year. The ongoing continuing threats, which will probably be on my slide every year. Is continued pressure from provincial legislation. That's code word for downloading. Things like the building code getting more onerous. Next year, there's going to be a requirement to implement seismic requirements in the interior, which didn't, which were already on the coast. So there's costs to developers, builders who are and homeowners who are looking to build, but also added burden on. Inspection staff who need to go out and inspect these things. So. The same service today is different than it was 20 years ago. Our inspections are much more complicated. The things we're expected to review are more time-consuming. And what used to be a simple inspection where inspector could come in and out of the property, they might be spending an hour or two there having to go through a lot more detail. ALR regulations, I brought this up already, and I know the board talked about this at UBCM. It's just an example, though, of staff time that's needed to explain things at the counter, help coach applicants and residents. And there's no direct revenue from that. So it's an important service that we provide and we're happy to do it. But I can't equate it. I can't show you in the budget where the revenue is for that because there is no revenue. We're doing this as part of the service. And the general taxpayer pays for that service. And then I want to give one more example of Crown referrals. The Crown is sending more and more. Referrals to us asking for comment on wind projects and all kinds of projects. Some of those go to the board. A lot of them are just handled directly by staff. But again, it's staff time being spent on this and there's no revenue. There's no application fee that we collect on that. Carla said I have to end on a positive, so. Terms of opportunities, we're continuing to make progress on long-range planning in-house. I really think that's an important. Thing. Again, staff enjoy doing it and we're keeping costs down compared to hiring consultants. We have a number of old outdated bylaws, things that need updating. We can do that in-house. We're going to continue to do that. Even if application numbers are, say, lower than they were in the record years of the last few years. We continue to look for ways to streamline processing. That's ongoing. Municipal Building Inspection Services contracts, which I had mentioned, we're renegotiating those with our participating municipalities. And we're actually going for a requesting a 25% increase. So those have been held steady for at least 15 years. Maybe longer. So 25% seems like a big jump. We couldn't really go more because there's a. It's difficult for those small communities as well. But the fact is that the cost of our service is going up, so we need to get additional revenue to help pay for it. And we're also looking at different ways of providing shared services. We're operationally feasible. Last year, we assisted Sun Peaks. This year, we assisted Sun Peaks for a few months while they transitioned to a new inspection team. And so we're always looking for those kind of opportunities. On the planning side, we also provide planning services for District of Clearwater under contract. We support Ashcroft and Cache Creek with zoning and land use application matters on a kind of per request basis. And remember, that's different. That's separate from the planning function. Agreement that we have where all municipalities pay in to vote on planning matters. These other contracts I'm talking about are to provide day-to-day file and application assistance to those communities. So most of the small communities just renewed in 2022. And the city of Kamloops is in discussions as well about renewal and we'll be bringing that forward to a board meeting hopefully later. This year, which would probably be next month. One area of opportunity there, I really wanted to highlight and finish on, and I did mention it last year, but it's planning application fees. So I'm not talking about building permit fees. I'm talking about rezoning, variance, floodplain exemptions, the different types of applications that frankly fill your agendas. Most meetings. I'd like to bring a bylaw, mending bylaw forward to increase some of those fees. They haven't been touched in at least 20 years. Some of them have actually gone down in recent years as we tried to make things easier for residents to apply. But that is really our only source of direct revenue. So every development services department, planning services department is subsidized. It's not cost recovery. But I think an increase is warranted. As an example, for rezoning, just the cost of our advertising is what the application fee is. And so what I'm going to be bringing forward is a bylaw that increases it incrementally. But isn't such that it deters development or makes it difficult on our property owners. That's not the intent here. But I think we have to find a way to increase that. I know this was brought up last year. A lot of local governments are afraid to make that first move because nobody wants to be seen as the one who raises fees. Fraser Valley Regional District increased their planning application fees. Squamish-Lilwet did the same. And there's one up significantly. We're talking like $14,000 for a rezoning application now. I'm not suggesting that, but I think we all need to start moving up somewhat to try to get some cost recovery. And yeah, just looking at ways of increasing revenue without discouraging development. I think I'll leave it at that and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Director Sal, Vice Chair Smith, Vice Chair Smith and Director Grenier, Director Sal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To Mr. Kraus. So the building code, I wonder how much of a priority for advocacy with maybe perhaps Mr. Kelly. We could do in terms of reducing the, you know, the own, like you mentioned, owners' regulations that were pushed to enforce. I remember I recently read in the Lower Mainland. They managed to push back on some sort of building code requirement for reducing the number of egress stairs for tall buildings. So it sounds like it's, you know, it building codes can be changed with enough. Advocacy. So I wonder if if there's any plans to work with Mr. Kelly on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the chair. Certainly that's something that can happen, but I think that has to come from the board and see if that's a priority. And then. We would look at that as a potential option. Yes, there can be lobbying of the building standards branch, and I think that can happen. I know there was discussion in the past. Even about like, can there be a rural building code, something that's a little bit more simplified where we're not applying the same rules in Richmond as we are in on the lakefront rural property. But I think that has to come from the board and then we would certainly look at that or move it forward.
Thank you, Vice Chair Smith.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mr. Kraus. I'm wondering whether there's. I sat through a housing session at UBCM and they were talking about electronic building application. Services. I'm wondering if that's something like, what would be the process to do that? And is that feasible for our region?
Yes, through the chair, that's certainly something that a lot of places are moving towards and the province is pushing. The province has an online portal that they're trying to develop to help local governments, but it's not quite there. The next step is private companies that offer that service. And I think that's where a lot of local governments will be going eventually. The issue with that is the cost of setting up. And being a member to that and maintaining that. So I think what we need in place first is a digital strategy. And then we could look at and have budget talks about what it would cost to start investing in that and moving to an electronic digital processing. And a lot of our rural residents still love coming in with paper. So we're also trying, we'd have to find a way to not just give them a link to a cloud somewhere.
Thank you, Director Grenier.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for that presentation. Mr. Kraus. In the budget information that we've got. We've got a five-year projection of using development. Services or building standard services. I'm not sure the terminology. But it's 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 five-year progression of withdrawing reserves. And I guess my first question would be. You don't anticipate a downturn for the next five years. Each of the next five years, you'd mentioned earlier that we had. A surplus of 900,000 in one year and I think he said six or four in the previous year. So some years are up and some years are down. And it looks like this year's going to be down. The five-year plan shows a continual withdrawal from the reserve. And even after five years of withdrawal from the reserves of $2 million shows $700,000 in that department. So I guess two things come to my mind. The first is. Do you really expect five years of decline? Would it make sense to kind of look to the future by looking at the past five years and saying reasonably, we can expect this? And then somehow look at that. That reserve of $2.8 million and say, how much is reasonable to continue to hold $2.8 million in building standards? And right now, after five years, we're still showing $700,000 out there. And we're facing an 8.9% increase in the provisional tax rate. So I wonder if you could comment on that.
Sure, thank you. So on the first part of the question, are we expecting a five-year decline? No, that's not the intent. The intent was to show. A realistic budget projection over five years where we're actually using some of that reserve. And not showing years of potential astronomical tax increases while we're sitting on $2.8 million reserve. So it's to project out how it could be used, but you're absolutely right. There will be years. For the next year where we don't come in lower and we're potentially adding to that reserve. But again, we would use that to offset taxation. That reserve and using that is what's really saving us from an even higher increase in taxes. So it's critical that we have it there. And again, I think the five-year projection, my crystal ball only goes one year at a time. But but I know with Carla, when we have to do the five-year plan. We can't just show that there's not going to be any reserve used and that costs are going up because it's not a realistic five-year plan.
Thank you. And and so sort of following up with that. That particular reserve is funded entirely by electoral area. It's the the building standards department. And that each of the electoral areas in this coming year. Is going to be charged $1.51 per 100,000 on the rate. No municipalities are paying into that. Into that reserve or that service. I think that that's important to get clear because last year, when this issue came up at budget time, there was some confusion around that. There's also in your presentation, you're talking about planning and zoning. So for electoral areas, the rate for planning and zoning is $7.96 per 100,000. The rate for all the other municipalities is $1.22 per 100,000, except for City of Kamloops, which is at 74 cents. So it seems we have this this imbalance because I don't think, if I've got it right, that planning and zoning has any reserves. If I'm wrong on that, then please correct me. But if the problem is that we have a planning and zoning reserve problem. We don't appear to have a reserve problem for building standards. We do seem to have a big discrepancy in rates charged and zero reserves in planning and zoning. Would you suggest that we focus on a reserve for planning and zoning? And would you suggest that we look at these rates and see what we should do about these rates relative to the services that people receive municipalities versus EA's?
Yeah, great question. Maybe I'll defer to Carla just on some of the reserve talk.
Yeah, thank you through to the board. Now, there there was a lot of. Statements within within that. I'll try to address some of them that I see. Number one, the building standards. Service is electoral areas. Only electoral areas pay taxation into building standards. There is a component of. Contract service that municipalities pay, but that's into the planning service, correct?
Correct.
So just to clarify, because building standards, electoral area, planning service, all under the development services umbrella, just to. Make it even more confusing. There's two departments under development services. The planning service has all the electoral areas. Plus municipalities. Except the city of Kamloops pays a flat rate into the the planning service. That's why the difference in tax rate comes in. And I'm certain that Jamie and Alex can both comment on what the city of Kamloops has. And why they don't fully play pay into the planning services. As you can imagine, they have their own large department. So the the revenues over time in the building standards department. Were predicted at 600,000. In 2025, they dropped to 480. Then in '26, up to 550, 2028, up to 575. By 2029, they're back up to 600,000. Okay, so we have to present a five-year strategy that's reasonable and achievable. And as Alex said, it's been very unpredictable since COVID. So we're doing our best based on the resources we have. To which I will say conservatively plan over five years. The reserve was built over time. We are using that reserve over time in, and I will do a full presentation of this tomorrow. On how the reserves are subsidizing taxation and what the tax rate looks like without it over the five years. So there there'll be a full presentation of this that we can delve into. The. The reasonable plan is to step down the amount of reserves over the five years. Because you can imagine if we have $600,000 of reserves offsetting taxation. In the next year, if I don't put any in there, taxes go up $600,000. So we have a strategy of 600,450, 425, 350, 275, as you can see, which reasonably drops that. Subsidy down so that taxes are slowly increasing. However, next year we'll get to relook at this. The other part here is we didn't want to be the staff to present a draining of the reserve to nothing. With unpredictableness. So we have to put a five-year reasonable plan in place and leave funds in there. If the board so chooses to do something different, this is a plan that we're. If the board so chooses to do something different, this is a plan that we're recommending. The board can come together and choose a different strategy, but that is a strategy that's been put forward. The planning service has no reserves. It needs a small amount of reserve in planning, obviously, for oper- operational fluctuations. The strategy uh for capital is minimal. There's a couple of vehicles that we have. So having a reserve in place to fund capital would be important. Previously, that wasn't required because capital was within the operating plan and every time they bought a vehicle, they paid for it out of taxation. Now that we've put capital into a separate plan, doing an intentional transfer. Out of operating to the reserve to fund the vehicle every few years would be valuable. And we're striving towards that. It is hard to. Take money out of a reserve to offset taxes and then tax and put money into the reserve. So right now, with this five-year strategy, we're trying to to bring something forward. And planning has no reserve. So it's going to take us time to fix that problem in itself with a long-term solution.
So just to be clear, I I understand everything you've said. And in the current model. You're projecting with all the cautionary notes you've made. That there's still seven hundred thousand dollars in the EA-funded-only. Building department after five years, and that's assuming we don't have five years of draw, which. Maybe we will, maybe we won't, but we still have seven hundred thousand. Further, we have um. Contracts with municipalities. We have a contract, I understand, with the city of Kamloops, which is why it pays at a different rate. And I believe that contract is coming up for renewal. It was a twenty-year contract at a fixed rate. And I think that if we are looking at budgets. We ought to be looking at the contracts, the fee arrangements, the charges to EAs. Revisit that and make sure that when we have no reserve for planning and development and we want one. That we set our rates according to the people that are benefiting from these. Planning and zoning services. And if maybe the city of Kamloops shouldn't pay anything. Maybe it should be paying twice as much as it's paying after twenty years. I don't know the answer to that, but I think it's time to start looking at that. Since we don't have a reserve in that and we have. A bigger balance of reserve in a department that we're already going to draw two million dollars on over the next five years.
Just in regards to context with the building standards. Planning, the planning service is a core service. There's no service establishment. The building standard service is a service that has a service establishment, a service establishment by law. In that bylaw, it states how the funds are to be collected. So if you are, and as we move forward into negotiations of a contract with the city of Kamloops, who has its own planning department. And contributes this sum of money to the T N R D. If we change a contract, we actually have to change the service establishment by law. It is a little bit more complicated than just a regular contract. The contract under the planning service, where different municipalities pay into, are outside the service establishment. Less complicated where Alex is saying they're increasing fees. That one's a little less complicated. Just want to. When we seek to understand, make sure that that's understood by the board as we move forward. And we will have a more wholesome discussion about the overall strategy of reserves being used to fund. Uh, and offset taxation here and largely in solid waste tomorrow.
Director Middleton?
Just a uh, a question and um, probably because I I don't really quite know for sure. On the variances and we see the variances or requests for variance come to. Come to our meetings and whatnot for approval. Do you bring every variance through to us or is there a certain sort of a threshold or a type of variance? Sort of a bit of a rationale to say perhaps what what the ask is, whether it actually needs sort of. Board approval or it could just be sent through by staff is is that? Is that a process that's already in place where staff does have authority to um? To uh sign off on what might be minor variances?
Yeah, thank you for the question. Right now, what we have is a board of variance and. People can apply for development variance permit, which comes to this group. The board of variance is a separate group that can look at minor applications. But the province has enabled us now, you're able to delegate minor variances to staff. And so that is something that can be streamlined. We haven't gone there yet. In the past. We kind of kept that kind of land use decision-making at the board level rather than staff level. But if that's something that the board wants to look at, then we can certainly look into that further. That would certainly be a streamlining. And a and a method of getting kind of minor variances off of the board's agenda, which on the variant side, it's not like we get that many. We're mainly rezoning and A L R and and different types of applications. But we could look at streamlining that, yes.
So maybe not something that really moves the dial on financial side of things or like it's not a huge cost that. Could be looked at and said we could reduce by. A percentage because we can do in-house rather than putting it out.
No, not really a cost savings because it's still staff processing it. We still need the staff to do the work. It would just save on putting it on the agenda and having the board discuss it. It might make the approval somewhat faster, but it wouldn't be a cost savings per se.
Any other questions for Mr. Kraus? Director Lebso?
Yeah, and that's kind of one of my concerns when I try to follow something from the village of Chase with the whole budget thing is trying to figure out. Is this Chase? Or is this electoral areas? Just like in an overall. Scheme when I read the whole budget, that's my number one. Thing I'm looking at and that's kind of what I'm seeing overall, like it's just hard. You know, when I see something that, oh, this is Chase, nope.
Fair enough. And yeah, on the building side. It's not directly some of the small municipalities, except if you have a contract with us and we're providing that service and it helps the general taxpayer here. On the planning side, though, just to be clear again, all of our municipalities pay to have a vote. That's the reason. As mayor of Chase, you're voting on a variance in Blue River. And that's not the case at every regional district, but this one has always worked. In that kind of regional approach where everybody pays in and you you essentially pay to play. You pay to have a vote on land use matters.
Thank you through to the board. I want to just extend again. Uh, Jamie and I are always willing to meet with you to take you through your area. We met with Director Sarai. We don't meet with many municipal directors, but the offer is still there. We have really focused the presentation of the budget in different packages. The summary, overall summary of the T N R D. The departmental summary, you can dive into any department and any service we offer and see the breakdown of their financial statement. The, obviously, the capital plan and then the tax impact document is really your ticket. To, it has an individual sheet for every municipality and every electoral area. And it lists every individual service you pay into and how much. That there, if you go look through that one. That one there will be your ticket to starting a conversation with us. As to what that might entail. So on one of the lines, it does say building standards. If you see that for your area and you are curious about what that entails, certainly reach out to Alex, Jamie or myself. Uh, depending on what service it is, obviously, but uh, and we will certainly uh try and give you enough information. That you can defend uh and understand what the cost is for.
Director Lebso?
And that part I understand and and it's great. I just, when I look at like right here. Continuing long-range planning in-house is that. Electoral, is it municipal, right? Uh, updating, reviewing outdated bylaws, is that? Municipal or is that like I, I need to be simple. It could, to simplify is it for me? Somewhat?
Yeah, no, point taken. Um, but we know we don't do long-range planning work for the municipalities. So there I'm talking about the EA context. But again, it would be stuff that you're voting on at this table because you participate in the planning function. So that's why it is relevant to all the municipal directors, but we're not doing work in your community directly.
And I just, Director Sau, I believe it was your point about the changes to the building codes and the the single, the double staircase requirement being removed. Uh, this might be an opportunity advocacy was mentioned. Um, I know removing the requirements for a double staircase was really to increase density. Whereas the seismic upgrades step code that is for climate change, that is for safety. However. We heard a lot in the aftermath of the B C election recently about the need to listen to the needs of rural British Colombians more. So perhaps the door has opened a sliver for uh representatives, local elected officials from rural. Communities and regional districts to make a case to Victoria that, once again, make the case to Victoria. That there is no one-size-fits-all requirement when it comes to these things and that the seismic requirements for a building in Richmond are probably slightly higher than for a building in Clearwater. Any other questions for Mr. Kraus? All right, moving around. Mr. Viera, I understand you're doing a fun-filled, action-packed, multi-header presentation for us. So come on, live up to the hype.
Oh, there, now I'm on. Yes, so. That was the introduction. So we're just getting started now. Into the operations division. So uh, yeah, I'm gonna do the same SWOT analysis for the four departments. That I have and really gonna, um, obviously, there's a lot of kind of external services that we provide through our operations division. Um, not going to cover all the aspects of everything that we've done or doing or challenges, but really going to try. Focus in on what I'm talking about or things that are directly impacting the budget or will be expecting to impact the budget. Uh, in the very near future. So trying to paint, kind of set the stage for the presentation tomorrow. Um, so yeah, our department, um, yeah, not the three-headed dragon. We got four departments. And um, when I talk to other people about what I do and um. Uh, just coincidentally today was Take Your Kid to Work Day. So my grade nine daughter was here, learning a bit about local government. Best way to explain it is through Paw Patrol. So. Works perfect for the operations division. We got the fire, community emergency services, solid waste and utility services. So if you haven't seen the show before, these are the the puppies at a uh, from the town of Adventure Bay that. Do all the good work. Um, and then there's this guy Ryder who gets all the credit, but really the dogs do all the work. So. So. Uh, Marshall, Chase, Rocky and Rubble. Rubble, that's right. Someone else got it. There we go.
This, this is where I step in and say, I'm very glad that my one child is twenty-seven years old and is beyond the Paw Patrol.
So getting into it, um, and I have Jason Tomlin, our manager of Fire Protection Services, behind me. Uh, so if you stump me on any questions, I'll be calling on him. Uh, so he is our marshal. So strength and accomplishments, um. Have to start here with really our our strengths, uh, of our fire departments is those community members, uh, those dedicated chiefs and firefighters. You know, specifically the the chiefs and captains, there's a lot of, in addition to their role as leaders on the fire department, there's a lot of kind of administrative work that we put on their shoulders as well that they're required. To do, um, which, you know, we realize that's not. Really what they necessarily, you know, they signed up for initially or or think is the best part of the job, but. We do our best to work with them to kind of alleviate that burden, but um definitely recognize them as, um, you know, the backbone of the of the service. And this year we surpassed two hundred members. So across our nine fire departments, two hundred members. I think we're at two hundred and two or two hundred and three right now. In part, that was the addition of a new fire department, the Monty Creek one, our ninth department, but as well as we're seeing some positive recruitment numbers in some of other uh communities. And uh, they're busy. Up until the end of September, between the nine departments, we already had a hundred and fifty-eight uh callouts. Uh, number of callouts by department definitely varies quite a bit depending on kind of their service area, service area, um, but definitely not idle. You know, and the unfortunate reality is a lot of those callouts were serious. Our departments had to deal with uh ten fatalities already this year between highway fatalities and uh and structure fire ones. The reason I bring out the callouts and and just the members, again, pulling it back to how this impacts the budget. Every time we have our our members called out, that's remuneration we're paying. Um, every time we're doing additional training, that's uh costs, uh, just training costs plus remuneration costs for the departments. Um, and uh, you know, speaking to Alex's crystal ball, Jason has a little one on his desk as well as when he's doing budgeting. We don't know how many callouts there's going to be each year. So we're trying to project based on past years, how many callouts there's going to be and how much remuneration is going to be paid to firefighters. So in addition, um, some other things that happened this year is we had Blackpool, Little Fort and Vavenby all responding to um fires, wildfires, either within their service area or nearby. Uh, Dunn Lake Fire was kind of the major one in the Little Fort Fire area that was supported by Blackpool. Uh, but in addition to within our region, we actually had quite a few out-of-region deployments and coincidentally, it was also Blackpool, Little Fort and Vavenby who were deployed. Um, and just a reminder uh that that those provincial deployments, uh, definitely were happy to be able to offer that service to our our neighbors around the province. Um, there's also a direct benefit back to the budget. Because the revenue that we get for those deployments goes directly back into that individual fire department's budget. Obviously, we have additional expenses related to that deployment, like, uh, you know, the wages paid to the firefighters. Uh, but there's significant amount of revenue going back, uh. Essentially that we're being paid for for use of our equipment that then goes back. Generally speaking, that equip, that that revenue will go into, after we cover our own expenses, that revenue goes into. Reserves to plan for funding uh for new capital requirements within that department. I just want to stress that because. We often get asked that by our individual firefighters, just clear, wanting to make sure that the money that we're making from those deployments, all that money stays in those departments and it does. So between those uh three different departments, it was three hundred and forty thousand dollars this year. Uh, so I mentioned it a few times, the remuneration that we pay for our our, to our fire departments or to our firefighters. Reminder, we I brought, we brought to the board for information last year that we adopted a new remuneration model. Um, we actually spent quite a number of months working with our fire chiefs um to come up with a a new mechanism. And um, we're really happy that we were able to launch that last year. So this year was the first year it's actually budgeted for. And in a nutshell, what that looks like is we're paying an hourly rate for every one of the firefighters. Whether they're training or whether they're on a call, they're getting paid an hourly rate. The old model was kind of a flat rate based on if it was a call out that was lasting less than two hours, it was this flat rate. If it was more, it was this flat rate. And then training was just a flat rate as well. Um, so what we've done now is it's more equitable. You get paid per hour based on your rank. And based on the time you put in. Um, definitely it was an increase to our budget last year, um, that's carrying forward because it's uh in into. All the budgets moving forward. Um, but part of that um is ensuring we're fairly compensating uh. These community members there. Um, yes, they're they're volunteering in the sense that they have other jobs and other commitments. Um, so we want to at least be able to, you know, cover some of those costs that they have, especially leaving a a paying job to go on a fire call. We're trying to figure out a way to bridge that gap and um, I think we're kind of going down the right road there. Regional Fire Smart program, I won't speak much to that because Kim was here at the committee the whole meeting uh last month and you received a report on this. So just a reminder that that's in this department. Um, it began in twenty twenty-three, was expanded this year. Um, and just from the budget piece, you'll see big numbers in the budget under Fire Smart. Um, I think it's an eight hundred thousand dollar operating budget. A hundred percent of that is grant funded, um, including the wages for our staff that we have in-house that are running that Fire Smart program. And back to the discussion about service agreements, uh, the nine-one-one service that we have servicing. And back to the discussion about service agreements, uh, the nine one one service that we have servicing all fire departments, including the municipal fire departments and improvement district fire departments in the T N R D. The nine one one service is a regional function. We have a service agreement now with municipalities to help meet our obligations under next generation nine one one, which has enabled us to have an actual additional body in our G I S department to support those municipalities to make sure that we have the correct data in the proper format to meet next generation nine one one readiness. So that's definitely a big win for this year. Capital projects, a whole list of new stuff here. I know many of you were around or aware of the grand openings we had at Loon Lake and this photo here is from the McClure edition, our Monty Creek Fire Hall broke ground last month, we're expected completion next summer. We have three new dry hydrants in the North Thompson. What those are is essentially a permanent giant straw fixed in the North Thompson River. So we have access to water to pump out of, uh, even during cold water, cold weather, because it'll be under the ice. Um, and a bunch of new apparatus and equipment. So again, speaking to our capital plan and capital replacement and, uh, and, and ability to do that with more revenue for deployments. We can replace things like bush trucks, get new tenders, get new, uh, uh, fire engines. The other piece that I, I forgot to mention earlier, when we are able to do the provincial deployments and, and additional equipment in our halls allows us to do that because we can't leave our fire protection area unprotected. So if we only have one fire engine, obviously we can't go on a deployment. But those departments that have an additional engine, that's an opportunity then to make, um, to make the revenue and to be able to help our neighbors. So weaknesses, a few things we went through this year. Birch Island Service Expansion, you'll be seeing a report actually on the agenda tomorrow about that process. So we gave the public an opportunity through a petition process to join an existing service area in Vavenby. Fortunately, that was not successful. Operationally, it made sense, but the, following the public process, the residents, there was not enough public support for that to go through. The Tobiano Fire Department, we're still struggling there. We took on that department in twenty eighteen with the plan of building a hall and there's a long story there, but we still don't have a fire hall. Working towards a possible service expansion, um, which may include Cherry Creek and maybe a solution to that, but it's currently a challenge because our, we literally have golf carts parked in the way of our fire truck when we're trying to go, um, on a call. Uh, because we're just leasing space off the, the golf course. Our fire dispatch infrastructure, so that's, uh, you received a report about this time last year about our radio repeater system where our system is responsible for making sure the signal from Kamloops Fire Dispatch gets to every fire department in the T N R D. We have a lot of infrastructure upgrades required there, um, working towards addressing that sort of piece by piece and prioritizing that, um, but definitely a challenge because we do have a, a reserve, uh, uh, a, a fairly decent reserve fund there. I think of one point, one and a half million dollars, but the actual report this board received, the total infrastructure replacement cost would be about six million dollars. So we're trying to prioritize that, look for grant opportunities to, um, try tackle that and improve that system. Training requirements is an ongoing challenge. Obviously, training requirements are not a bad thing. But just keeping our departments always up, up to the training requirements to respond is just an ongoing both administrative challenge and really workload and time for the fire departments. This has definitely been helped with the creation of the, a new position, the fire training coordinator, which Janice Winger is in, uh, who's been in that position for, for over a year now. So opportunities moving forward. This is a big one. You've heard us talk about this, uh, the wildfire program is called Cooperative Community Wildfire Response. When I was here speaking to it, I called it our CROs, uh, Community Emergency Response Organizations. So with U B C M and B C Wildfire recently announced a grant program that, uh, will fund training and P P E for these organizations and we are in the process of creating a T N R D application process for these community groups to be able to apply to, which will be launching later this month or, or early in December. Increased service level is always an opportunity. Uh, we hear about this a lot from community members and even from our own firefighters about increasing levels to do things like first responder where they automatically are dispatched on a call that would be going to ambulance as well. Road rescue, interior attack are, are currently all our fire departments are exterior attack only. So there's opportunities to increase service level. Keeping in mind that's additional training, additional work, additional expenses, but we have a lot of departments. And, and our departments are kind of at different levels of sort of maturity in terms of how long they've been around, the depth of experience. But, uh, I, we see that as, as an opportunity moving forward. Wildfire deployments, I already mentioned that, that's an opportunity always ongoing for revenue. Municipal service agreements, we are for, especially for those municipal directors on the table. If we haven't already, we're meeting with your C A O shortly to discuss those agreements that we have in place with almost all of you. I think the only municipality we don't have service agreements is Kamloops, Litton and Cache Creek. And, and Clearwater, sorry. So we have, uh, how many is that? Nine, eight, something like that. But anyway, uh, the, the, the service agreements are to provide fire protection to T N R D properties that are nearby a municipal fire department. And we, uh, pay the municipality to provide that service. So those, uh, those discussions are just making sure we're on the same page as the municipal, um, staff and trying to enter into long-term agreements to ensure that kind of there's no surprises on either end. When, uh, you know, that, that the municipality is ensuring that they have a capital plan to continue to provide that service and our funding that we're providing is contributing towards that capital requirement. First Nation partnerships, definitely an opportunity there. Um, we've had some historical partnerships, but this is definitely a big opportunity in the sense that there's a lot of untapped, um, potential in terms of possibility of T N R D providing service to First Nation bands and vice versa, partnership agreements. Even, you know, the idea, concept of, of joint fire departments. We know there's other examples of that around the province and around the country, um, and definitely an opportunity. Possible service expansions, I mentioned Tobiano, so the, 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 the most kind of upfront one the board will be hearing about is revisiting the proposal for expanding the Tobiano service to include the community of Cherry Creek and working on that this winter and hopefully bringing further information to the board, uh, early in the new year. Asset management, you'll see that as a theme on all the opportunity slides. Um, it's definitely, uh, something we're doing differing levels between each department. But, uh, the asset management strategy that you had a presentation on and then a report coming to you next meeting, well, we'll speak to that in more detail, that, um, the opportunity is to have, uh, a, a system in place and a strategy in place that all departments follow. And it, it'll improve our ability to replace things in the capital plan and plan for it long term and again, bringing it back to the budget, ensuring our taxation is, um, stable as possible to plan for replacing those assets. And grants are always an opportunity. Um, we definitely have used C C B F funding a lot to support our fire departments as well as the Community Emergency Preparedness Fund. So threats. Inflation, that's also a theme you're going to continue to see. Um, yes, we are seeing obviously inflation stabilize, but as, you know, we're replacing new equipment, there's still always, I think Jason always has a bit of sticker shock knowing what it used to cost for some of this equipment just in few years past and what it looks like now. Fire Safety Act, um, this is a big one. We've mentioned a couple of times at the board. To be honest, we're still trying to unpack exactly how we're going to deal with this moving forward, but the, the real short version of this is the act now requires regional districts to do inspections and investigations in areas that aren't covered by a fire department. And so what's unclear is how are we supposed to fund that and pay for it? We don't have any way to fund a staff position to do that or a contractor to do that. The Office of the Fire Commissioner is kind of aware of this nuance and challenge and they're going to be working with us to, you know, immediately deal with any investigations, um, that are required. But there'll be more information coming to the board, um, and we're going to seek some more clarification from the province of what this is going to look like. Mentioned NG nine one one already. Definitely are, and you're, you're gonna see a, uh, an agreement coming before you at the board meeting tomorrow, our contract cost both for primary, that's a contract with Ecom nine one one to answer the call and then secondary dispatch, which is the fire dispatch side. Because of NG nine one one, the new technology required, those contract costs are increasing. So we're seeing that reflected in the budget as well. Uh, also on the board meeting tomorrow, the merit service review, I'm just bringing this up as a kind of a threat, not uh, obviously that the merits area fire protection service review is, is one component, but this idea of if we have groups of residents who want to enter fire protection area or leave fire protection area. In this case, wanting to leave a fire protection area that has a trickle down effect that then is going to increase costs to other areas that still want fire protection. And then the concern is could there be a downward spiral of, uh, everyone's unhappy with the cost? And Loon Lake Fire Hall, so you, for all, all of you are aware, I just spoke about the, the, the new Loon Lake Fire Hall. And then we have a second hall in Loon Lake that's actually a lease from the community association. We're looking into engage into a long-term lease for that property. At this point, the community association hasn't granted us a long-term lease, so it's a risk that if we can't secure a long-term tenure, then we may need to look at other property and another capital, uh, project. If that happens, it'll come back to the board for more information. Questions on fire department?
Director Sau and then Director Karback.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, uh, sorry, I get excited when there's revenue. You know, one of the
I was gonna say, when there's puppies.
So I hear, you know, this is one of the few, very few areas in the T N R D services where, you know, there's the, um, opportunity to generate revenue, uh, with the deployments. I wonder, um, you know, and I appreciate, you know, my one-on-one with yourself and Miss Fox and Mr. Hiltbrand that, uh, you know, management team has always already, uh, looked at all possibilities of flexibility and, you know, transferring reserves and I understand the legislated, um, you know, lock that we have as regional district. But with that being said, um, has there been any, um, discussion among the management, uh, team on any possibilities of further leveraging this ability to generate revenue, um, to benefit? You know, the overall budget, if that's a possibility, thank you.
So specifically through fire departments?
Uh, no, um, so generating revenue from fire departments, but you know, somehow being able to use that in other T N R D budgets.
Yeah, um, so through the chair, I think the short answer is no, we wouldn't go down that road because the uh, the service is its own service. So any revenue generated by that service stays within that service, just the same. If we're taxing for fire protection, that revenue needs to be used for that service, fire protection, and we wouldn't transfer it around. And yeah, just the optics of, of generating revenue from a specific fire department and using it broader would be a definitely, I think, a challenge to sell to the community and the fire department members as well. Anything to add to that, CFO Fox?
I guess the one thing through to the board that I would say there's a lot of opportunity for shared services with other municipalities that do similar things that we do and largely within the administrative function. And if we can save money within the administrative function and bring revenue into the administrative function, it benefits all of the, the municipalities as well as the electoral areas because that cover, that's your regional costs. So we, we typically aren't trying to do shared services in areas that have established service establishments like a fire hall or noxious weed or, or things like that, because anybody who wants into that is paying into that. It's more these areas of opportunity where other municipalities are doing finance and they can't afford large E R P systems. Other municipalities have to do, uh, human resource management and they can't afford, uh, having a full-time human resource manager. So just to kind of give a little bit of context where shared services is really capturing the ability to do things on a larger scale that small municipalities can't. And where I see a little bit of a tangent here, but a benefit is when you have turnover of two of your finance staff and you only have four finance staff within a small municipality. They lose their redundancy, they lose their knowledge. Uh, so having experts here that would, that would be able to help support that there, but that is separate from the individual services where service establishments are required.
Director Karback.
Thank you, Chair. Um, pushing through to staff here and Jamie specifically with the PFAS, uh, free bunker gear and things like that. I see City Vancouver in April, a one-time expenditure of almost three million dollars to make sure that their staff are safe with non, at this point carcinogenic materials in their, um, protective gear. Is that something that we've got on our radar? Because it looks like that's going right across as a requirement. So I'm just curious where we're at with that, because that looks as a threat financially to a cost we may have to bear.
Yes, uh, definitely agree. It's on our radar, but I'll let, uh, Jason speak to it if he has any more.
I don't really have much more to add than correct. It, it's very expensive to replace as a whole lot. So our strategy is to replace it as it ages out with the PFAS free product.
Thank you. And just something I, I, I remember hearing in the discussion on that with the City of Vancouver. Of course, these are paid firefighters who are wearing it all the time, you know, twelve hours a day, four days on and off or whatever their schedule is. Whereas with many of our departments, even in Ashcroft, Cache Creek, Clearwater, uh, you know, the, the, the firefighters are spending relatively small amounts of time in their turnout gear. So I can't see a model where we would be forced to replace it all en masse for people who wear it sometimes two hours a week on training night on Tuesdays.
So supplemental that, I think the, the thing that's lost in that is when that gear comes back and it's washed, it ends up in the water system and that's still a carcinogen that is not picked up in water treatment. It is now put into the system and can be picked up in a downstream water system. So if Canals washes its gear, because we use it more often and it goes in the Thompson River, it ends up in Ashcroft and you may be sucking it in. And that's where the concerns are now becoming environmental, not just what they're wearing. But it actually becomes a systemic chemical in the system. So that's a concern that is being also broadcast out there.
Fifty years ago, the Ashcroft Journal was reporting that the village of Ashcroft was very concerned about what was being discharged by Kamloops into the Thompson River. So some things never change. I have Director Smith next.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, further to that conversation, actually, that was going to be my ask of Jason. I thought in the past, we heard some conversation from the province about relaxing some of the rules and regulations for volunteer fire departments rather than paid file, uh, fire departments. So in other words, length of service of gear and, uh, and all of that sort of thing. I thought that was going to be relaxed for volunteer fire departments and that we weren't going to be held to the same standard as a, as a paid fire hall.
Definitely there were discussions and there's lobbying for that, um, just for everyone's benefits, uh, a set of turnout gear expires in ten years, whether you use it once or you use it a thousand times. It, it needs to be replaced and that's, that's the standard that works at B C holds us to. So the thoughts with the, the non-career fire departments that don't utilize their gear as often would be to extend that lifespan, um, that would exceed the ten-year mark, but there hasn't been a lot of traction at this point on that. And I think a lot of it obviously is firefighter safety is paramount. So it's, it's a, a bit of a slippery slope for sure.
Thank you very much. Any other questions on fire protection? Director Morris.
Thank you. Sorry, just a quick one. Um, how, some of these smaller extensions, and I'll, I'm doing shoe swap roads, surprise, surprise, as an example that ultimately you're starting to see. That ultimately you're starting to see, we want some now two and it's too far away from one. And I what I'm sensing and I see some of my colleagues might be smiling a bit about this is we're going to see more and more of that. As we see these changes in density zoning, all those things. What is our capacity as as the TNRD? To be able to continue to expand, we we're going to have to build, I suspect. Some capacity in there in terms of additional, so the the shoe swap road one is is the best example that I can provide at this point. But this isn't going to be a one off, it's going to happen farther afield. So it's really just a question of what is that? Long term planning and when are we going to be doing that as well, recognizing the changes?
Yeah, through the chair, thanks for that Director Morris. And that's a loaded question, it's a good question, a really good question and something that we wrestle with all the time. Because we get these asks through board directors, through the public about possible expansions, about possible new service. So when you. When you ask what's the capacity, there's a lot of things going to my mind, what's our staff capacity to do these processes to expand services? And I mean, using the Birch Island example, we just spent a lot of staff time and a lot of resources and effort to offer. Residents but operationally made sense and then it still wasn't approved, so. How many, you know, how often do we do we try to do those service expansion? So I'm I'm beating around the bush a bit because I I don't have a clear answer for you. I think the idea of maybe having more of a strategic approach to when and where we consider expansion from a board direction level. We don't have that and maybe that's the next step. Because we're getting, I mean, and I've talked to the board this board about it before, probably count on both hands how many different asks that we have out there theoretically. Well, maybe we could do this and how about we expand to here and maybe put a new department over here?
Thank you very much, any other questions on fire protection? All right, we move into the exciting world of solid waste and recycling.
Right, so that's Rocky's world. Yes. So yeah, this is, so three more departments, solid waste and recyclings next. So what's happening there and definitely impacting the budget is. Customer service contractor, sorry, new operations contract in 2022 that impact the budget. Want to start off with this as a strength because we definitely saw an improvement in customer service, overall operations. Is and and. I I guess overall staff in terms of our contract staff. Happiness and working condition with the upgraded service agreement, so that's been in place now for a year and a half. Our regional solid waste management plan implementation process, there's a lot of things on that plan. And that's our 10 year plan that was that we're at year five of now, boxes that were getting checked off, which I'm pretty happy about. One of the big boxes there we checked off this year is that year round household has this waste facility in Kamloops. So that opened this year, available to all TNRD residents and any municipal, any municipality residents. Is open five days a week, you can drop off the nasty stuff that you shouldn't put in your garbage and we don't want you to put in your garbage. But until now told you, save it up and you only have one day a year to get rid of it. Now we have a place that's open five days a week, you can get rid of it. Expanded some recycling services, some more light recycle depots at our eco depots. Our mandatory recycling bylaw, which we initially the board adopted in 2023 or 2022. We expanded again in spring of this year to add to cardboard that was exist already on there to include all. Materials that are considered under the recycling regulation by the province, meaning they have an extended producer responsibility program. We are in full enforcement, we have a roving inspector. Who's part of their job is to visit the sites. Happy to report we're at 96 compliance rate on his random inspections of people already complying with that by law. Other things specific to this year, we're definitely busy in the solid waste side, supporting the emergency operations. Cleanup and work in Savona and Venables Valley, supported by this department. So this picture is the curbside cleanup that was happening in Savona following the the flash flooding that took place there. A number of capital projects in this department, the picture on the side is the sun, an actual photo of our new trailers, but they look almost the same as that. So for those who've been to our eco depots, we have large walking floor B train trailers that our garbage gets loaded into and hauled to our landfills. Those are old and tired, 15 years old now, those trailers. And so we've replaced two of them this year and planning to replace the remainder over the coming couple of years. So you're going to be hearing more about that in the capital, capital plan. Also doing some upgrades in Litton currently to the bin wall there to enable, just to support the rebuilding there. There's a lot of commercial dumping trailers and smaller dump trucks that we want to be able to accommodate at that facility with all the construction going on. And always looking for efficiencies in operation. Yeah, I should introduce Curran sitting behind me, he's our operation supervisor and working on a compactor at Sun Peaks to. Get some hauling efficiencies there, there's so much waste there in the winter, it's worth the investment after crunching the numbers to be compacting that garbage before we haul it to do less hauling. And shout out to our staff, we hosted the every, every year, there's a Southern Interior Waste Managers Association Conference. And each regional district takes a turn hosting, and so it was our turn to host this year and they did an awesome job in September. Of, yeah, I think there's 11 different regional districts that attend that and. They got to tour all the different facilities and had a, yeah. Social time and professional gathering where you don't, I I I did the introduction and speaking to the the staff there. There's not very often you get to sit beside someone doing the exact same job as you when you're a, you know, a waste reduction coordinator in a regional district. So it's really valuable to have those those connections and make that on an annual basis. Yeah, so we're in the same boat, declining revenue as Alex spoke about. We're projecting being $800,000 under our budget and projected projected revenue. And. You know, even though we didn't predict predict this. Knowing that Alex was seeing a declining revenue on the building permit and construction side. Naturally, we would see that on the solid waste side, solid waste revenue, the amount of solid waste is very dependent on economic activity, specifically. Construction sector, that's a large amount of where the the revenue comes from and the waste comes from. So in addition to like the home construction, building construction, the other big piece was Trans Mountain Pipeline. That construction project was bringing a lot of waste and revenue into our our system and that definitely has dropped off this year. We also are having some increased competition for landfill specifically in Kamloops with the Kamloops opening their new facility. So there's same or actually less amount of garbage and now more places to take it. So there'll be more discussion this and you'll see this and and my one on one, this are one on one discussions with the area directors. We spoke about this impacting the solid waste budget, essentially the. The what we don't make in tipping fees, we have to make up through taxation. So the solid waste regional service is funded approximately, year to year changes, but approximately 75% through taxation. And 25% through the revenue, both from tipping fees and and recycling revenue. So when the tipping fees go down, our taxation has to go up or else find other revenue like reserves, which we'll be talking about tomorrow. So those contract costs, even though I talked about it as a strength, it also impacts our budget significantly. It's a much higher contract costs when it was renewed last in in 2022, the old five year agreement, the new five year agreement we're in now had about a 30% increase. And just baseline operating costs from the previous contract. Our household has this waste facility, which again, we're excited about and happy about. We also had to use the crystal ball for that as well, because we haven't operated them before, we don't know exactly how much is out there. We cost share the operation of that with the city of Kamloops, because city of Kamloops doesn't pay into the solid waste service. But all the other areas do, so it's a it's a split cost 50 50. Anyway, long story short, our operating costs are higher than we projected, so now in the 2025 budget, we're increasing those costs. We're still not sure what the kind of equilibrium is going to be, it's a brand new facility, so we know a lot of people are cleaning out their garage, cleaning out grandpa's barn and bringing it in there. So we know there's going to be a spike, we're not sure where that's going to level off. But planning for higher costs than originally anticipated. Opportunities going forward, I mentioned recycling revenue, so even though we got lower revenue on the tipping fee side. Starting next year, our new agreements with Recycle B C, which is the provincial organization responsible for packaging and printed paper. The new agreements with them increases the payments to specifically to local governments. So we're looking at about a $300,000 increase in revenue from those agreements, which is welcome news. Clean Farms Pilot Project, we talked about this at the last Solid Waste Committee meeting and. I think is going forward next meeting to be approved by the board. So that's an additional service that's been being asked for by this board for many, many years to try find a solution or option, opportunity for recycling agriculture plastics. I mentioned the regional solid waste management plan already, so we're at year five, we're launching what we call an effectiveness review, because it's a 10 year plan. But halfway through, we do kind of a mini check in to see where we're at. The biggest piece of that is going to be a a waste audit that we look at what's actually in our garbage to determine. You know, what's the next thing we chase to try reduce waste to landfill? Last time we did that was five years ago, so that information will be coming to this board next year. Asset management, I told you I was going to put it in every department, because all of these have major assets. Capital projects for next year are some bathroom facilities and like I mentioned, a replacement of additional B train trailers. And. Speaking of our. B train trailers or any other capital project, something that hasn't been done in the past, but wanted to highlight here as an opportunity. Is that as we see our costs and taxation related solid waste increasing? We haven't typically allocated any gas tax or CCBF funds to the solid waste service, but it's definitely an eligible expense. So that's something for the board to consider when thinking about, you know, taxation increases and ways to offset that and what other revenues. Or money sources there is. So threats on the solid waste side related to what I just said, draining the reserve, so we'll speak, Carl will speak to this in more detail tomorrow. But we are budgeting for utilizing solid waste reserve to reduce the impact to taxation. A significant amount over the five year term. The concern with that, and I guess a little bit different than what Alex was speaking to on the building side. This reserve fund is not just, you know, to cover off a balanced taxation. The main purpose of this reserve fund is to fund future capital, so if we're using that money to reduce taxation, that means it's not going to be there to replace capital. Climate change is definitely a threat in this department, the amount and type of waste that we see and the cost associated dealing with it is an ongoing challenge. Especially when we have disasters, there's more pressure on pressure on the TNRD as an organization and the board around how we can waive fees. So kind of hitting a double whammy, we've got increased operating costs with dealing with additional materials and then the the potential. You know, pressure to not recoup the full amount of fees that it costs to deal with that. Landfill capacity, I mentioned the competition impacting the revenue stream. So the threat here, the way I I wrote it is the landfill capacity and being an excess of capacity. And I don't think, I think this is both a threat and an opportunity, I don't think it's a problem necessarily that we have excess landfill capacity. It's definitely a unique scenario in the province, almost all regional districts are challenged and concerned about running out of landfill space. Because typically it's next to impossible to find, to to establish a new landfill. But I think. Going forward, there needs to be some more strategic discussions between TNRD, city of Kamloops and to Kamloops around what what the future is. Or utilizing that existing capacity. Behavior change or lack thereof, this comes from the public side, this is an ongoing threat and issue that we have. In terms of as we move forward and this board's very supportive of, you know, new diversion initiatives, they're supportive of the mandatory recycling. Bylaw, but when it comes to one on one interactions at the sites with customers, it's not always met well. So the challenge of of having attitudes adjusted and accept new reality and how to deal with our waste is an ongoing challenge. Any questions on solid waste?
Any questions, Director Thorpe and Director Grenier? And okay, Director Thorpe?
Thank you, Chair, so I have a question, it goes back to those B trains, you were talking about taking funding from gas tax. Given that EA's have their own individual. CCBF for the various projects that they have in their areas and given that that comes to the TNRD. But municipal, they get their gas tax separately. So how how do you propose a fair formula so that EA's and municipal are all paying into this? And then how do we, I guess Kamloops would be excluded because they don't pay into that?
Yeah, I'll let CFO Fox take that question.
This will be some and through to the board, this will be a topic that we discuss tomorrow during the capital. So we'll get in there because I know this will probably generate conversation. First issue I think that we'll have to overcome is UBCM's definition of what the community works funds are for. And what the TNRD has created a policy in order to allocate the community works funds. Kind of contradicts what UBCM is trying to enforce. The fundamental problem with this is the gas tax that we get, community works funds that the TNRD gets is for TNRD infrastructure. The municipal directors that sit at the TNRD board make decisions at this table for the TNRD and the TNRD infrastructure. When those municipal directors go back to their municipalities and that municipality receives gas tax. They make decisions at that table to spend their community works gas tax. For municipal infrastructure. We are not asking the board to make decisions around TNRD gas tax. To support municipal infrastructure, so it wouldn't make sense for municipality to give the TNRD money to spend on TNRD infrastructure. The fundamental problem has been created when we divvy up the TNRD funds. And allocate it to individual electoral areas and make decisions that way. It's contradictory to what we're being asked to do with the TNRD. Community Works Funds, which is to fund core TNRD infrastructure. Solid waste trailers, for an example, are TNRD infrastructure. And we will ask the board to make a decision whether they want to support TNRD infrastructure with TNRD Community Works Funds. But that is going to be a loaded topic. That we will have to. End up probably having maybe a separate discussion, but what we'll do tomorrow is we'll go through the operating budget, we'll go to the capital. And we talk about capital opportunities, that is one that we'll bring up. And if the board wants to delve into a deeper dive into that, that's probably. Time we'll have to save at the end for that discussion.
Okay, so then two questions come to mind, if municipalities are then using a TNRD asset. Would we then not charge them for use of said asset? And then the other question would be, if you could explain the gas tax, is it not based on populated that the TNRD receives? Is it not based on the population that are within the EA's? Just to try and clarify for my own understanding, please.
Yeah. Thank you, Chair, through to the board, so. The the UBCM, the the provincial government, provincial federal, I'm losing my mind right now, but. When they provide us the funds, they provide funds to the regional district based on the the constituents, the population of the regional district. And the only capital that the regional district has is capital owned by the Thompson Nicola Regional District. So the confusion comes in is municipal directors are appointed. So the confusion comes in is municipal directors are appointed to the TNRD board to make decisions on behalf of the TNRD. So they have a vote, what happens to TNRD funds, how they're paid, how they're used to pay for TNRD infrastructure. So even though we might fund a solid waste trailer with gas tax or community works funds, that solid waste trailer is within the solid waste department under the TNRD umbrella. It is not a service of the municipalities. It's not a service of the City of Kamloops. It's a service of the Thompson Nicola Regional District, of which you are all here to make decisions for. So I know it gets, because we take the funds and divvy them up based on population, we we are the TNRD. That's the population we serve. That's the way that they break down the funds. And and there is no decision here being requested of the board to fund any asset that isn't owned by the TNRD.
Does that answer your question, Director Thorpe? Okay, thank you. Director Grenier, then I have Director Ranta. Were there any other hands? Director Hotten? Okay, thank you. Director Grenier.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Jamie. You've expressed a concern that we're dipping into reserves for operations. I think this year to the tune of $800,000. You've also said that 25% of our revenue stream is from users and that that has declined in part because TMX and in part because of declining building waste. So I'm just wondering for tomorrow's meeting, if it would be possible to give us kind of a breakdown of that 25% we get from third parties, I guess. How much of that was TMX, which we'll never get because they're done? And how much of that is of building waste that will ebb and flow as we've talked about with with Mr. Krause? Because that 800 grand is a big hunk of of that reserve. And what I'm trying to understand is whether we really should be planning on an $800,000 deficit for five years each year? Or whether we can expect that to to improve? That might be useful for tomorrow's meeting.
So through the chair, I can dig into that a little bit. I probably won't be able to have the level of detail of the customer like what came from TMX. But I will say that the in the financial plan that you guys are looking at now, that the draft budget, the revenues have been adjusted. So Adriana has gone through that in detail and updated the projected revenue for the next five years based on removing that TMX material, based on the current reduction in how much waste we're seeing in there. So you'll see that it dropped significantly from what it previous was and similar to Alex's projection. You know, we are showing it increasing slowly, but trying to be conservative and try find that balance of not projecting too much revenue, but not projecting too little either.
And supplemental to that. The third thing that was a big impact on that was the opening up of the TTS landfill site. And we find ourselves, we we suspect competing for that building waste. And I'm just wondering, we've suffered a decline in building waste. I'm wondering if we should be planning on a chronic five-year that's gone to like the TMX. If we are going to lose through competition, we either have to adjust our rates or somehow entice people to come to us or plan on losing that income. And I'm just wondering if we could even maybe tomorrow have a wholesome look at that aspect, that third aspect of the competition, which we didn't plan for when we entered into contracts and everything else.
Yeah, I I through the chair, I think that's worth considering. I think we're a little like we don't have all that data yet to know what that full impact's going to be. I mean, it's definitely a consideration. That's what I'm bringing up here as a threat and an opportunity. But like I said, our revenue that we have projected right now is based on what we've gone through in this last year and what we're projecting to see in the future. Based on what we know, less, less activity from TMX, reduce construction and increase competition.
So chronically, $800,000 a year is what we think?
Well, I I guess depends which way you look at it. I would, I would, I would say that we were the the 800,000 was in part inflated because of this mega project, because of Trans Mountain. Also, that 800 was also inflated because over a number of years, we actually had significant revenue coming in from disaster debris that was being covered by the province through cleanup, like we had a huge amount of revenue coming in from the flooding in the Atmospheric River that was covered by the province. And so that was an influx of a few hundred thousand dollars. So there was a bit of over over, not over budgeting. I mean, I guess maybe it was over anticipating that revenue based on previous years and we've corrected that now. And that's why it's been reduced. So I guess that's my long-winded answer of saying, yes, we are permanently projecting lower revenue or permanent in the five-year plan.
Director Ranta.
Thank you, Chair Oden. I'm, I don't know where Mike got the 800,000 figure. Looking at page 12 of the agenda, it says the utilization of reserves for 2025 is 600,000. Looking at page 27, I see that for general government services, that's the highest expense in the TNRD at roughly 24 million. And the second highest expense is solid waste and recycling. And that's at 13 million, which increases 2% a year over the next five years to 2029, when it goes from 13.7 to 15.1 million. And when I, when I look at the taxation percent impact on page 12 without subsidies, without subsidies in 2025, it'd be 19.9% increase. And in 2026, a 13.5% increase. And with subsidies, which is indicated on page 12 of 600,000 and 500,000 in 2025 and 2026, it drops it down to 11.6 and 15.7% increases. When I see double-digit percent taxation increases, it causes me some anxiety. And the overall impact in my little village is over 10 and a half percent in the upcoming year for TNRD services. And I've got nothing against the services, but when I look at the solid waste and recycling, the reserve amount is at 11.227 million presently. And over 25 to 29, we're planning on taking 600,000, 500,000, 350, 250, and 100,000 out, which leaves us with 9,427,000 at 2029, which is 68% of the proposed expenses. And I'm not comfortable with only taking that much out of reserves when we're left with over $9 million in reserves over five years. And I recognize that the reserves are being intended to be utilized for capital expenditures and whatnot. But in order to further reduce the impact on taxation, I'm wondering if we couldn't take an extra 100,000 in 2025 and 2026 to further reduce the impact on taxation because it goes down in 2027 to 3.9%, 2028, 2.8%, and 2029, 3.6%. So I'm just thinking that it might be appropriate since we've got 9,427,000. If we only had 9,227,000, that would allow us to take an extra 100,000 in 2025 and 2026 to reduce the impact on taxation. So the other thing I'd like to mention is we've got a little landfill in Cash Creek that's licensed to take 750,000 tons a year. And we're getting less than half of that. So if you need a spot to put some waste, we're happy to take it.
CFO Fox?
Thank you and excellent. I so appreciate the use of the budget document to go to all of those numbers. And I'm trying to follow along really quickly. Please remember from the reserves, although we are drawing from them for operating, we are also drawing from them for capital. So if you were to look at the reserve schedule, the five-year schedule brings the total amount of reserves in the solid waste department to 4.2 million dollars. So we start to see opening balance 12 million. Oh, I just better make sure it's adding it up properly here. Yeah, 12 million. So over that period of time, drawing down the solid waste reserves to a point in 2029 of 3.6 in those reserves and of course, there's a landfill closure reserve that has part of, part of those funds in it of 530,000. So when I think about the legacy that this board wants to leave and staff want to leave, taking a $10 million reserve and cutting it in half over five years as a financial person. And with the training that I have, that's worrisome to me. It worries me in the way that if we are spending $2 million a year out of a reserve, now that has 5 million for our number one service with the most capital, we could use $5 million fairly quickly. So I have to think beyond the five-year mark and how much I can reasonably leave in there and feel good about moving forward. It does development services, less worried. That's what it's for. Solid waste has been a combination of capital purchases and operating tax fluctuation stabilization. So yes, using it for tax stabilization has been something that we've done. I am always very cautious using reserves because if you, even if we add an extra 100,000, if that's what the board so chooses next year, so if we put $700,000 and next year it goes to 400, $300,000 immediately tax increase next year. Because we no longer are using $700,000 for reserves. So I'm very cognizant of the proposal we put in place, you'll see year over year is stepping that amount down year over year. So after the five years, hopefully we can sustain, saying no other factors. This is obviously something we'll relook at again next year. We will have a fulsome conversation about this. I'm doing a presentation specifically on the use of reserves where when we do provisional budget presentation, I will have motions for the board to support the totals of the use of the reserves from those funds to offset taxation. Because we brought you a budget of 8% knowing that it was probably 13% without reserve usage. And the board should really drive that decision. So there's kind of my elaborate explanation of that reserve fund and where the balance is going to. I am not here to debate with the board. We've presented kind of what we feel is a reasonable option. If the board wants to make changes, you know, the numbers that are there. And if the board wanted to use another $100,000, I just have to tell you what the impacts of that decision are. And if the board so chooses, that's what we bring you back at provisional.
Thank you. Follow-up, Director Ranta? You good?
All I got was a bunch of baffle gab and 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 it's not it's it's not addressing the issue. According to the documentation we have, we would have 9.427 million at the end of five years in the reserve. And I don't know where, what you're looking at for your numbers, it must include capital expenditures, which I don't have in my document here. So, you know, I still feel as if we could take easily 100,000 in 2025 and 2026, making it 700 and 600,000 out of reserves. And then by the time you get to 2027, it goes down in any event to 3.9, 2028, 2.8, and 2029, 3.6. So the percent impact on taxation goes down after 2027. And so, or after 2026. So I'm thinking that it would not be unreasonable to take an extra 100,000 in 2025 and 2026. That that was my point.
Thank you. I don't know that it's baffle gab, although those of us who are not as good with numbers as we are with words, it is a lot of numbers I do grant you. But and the other thing, just reminder to all the directors, and I think all the EA directors have taken advantage of this. Municipal directors as well are able to book an appointment to go and sit with CFO Fox and go over things in more granular detail, I believe it's called. I have Director, I have Director Hotten, I have Vice Chair Smith, and I have Director Sarai, Director Sal. Director Hotten?
I'll make this quick. Jamie, today I was at the Northern Metallic Oil Dealer, which is a Chevron bulk oil dealer up on the top of the hill at Versatile Drive. And their their policy was if you bought their oil there, you could take the used oil back to them. Today, they've got to sign up and I even asked the attendant, they're forwarding everybody. They're not taking it anymore. They'll still sell you all the oil you want. But they're they're forwarding everybody to our hazardous depot over in the reserve. I didn't know if that was a a common thing between the bulk oil dealers or if you're aware of that. I thought I'd make that aware of it. That only happened two days ago.
Thank you for that. I was not aware of that. Sneaky move. We'll be going visit them.
But Vice Chair Smith?
Thank you, Chair. I think you, I think you may have already answered my question. Speaking to offsetting the tipping fees when you have a disaster event, if we want to help a community out by by maybe not charging those fees, can they be reimbursed through disaster relief funding? It sounds to me like the province was already covering them.
That's a great question. And the response from the province has been inconsistent year to year. That's been our challenge. At some years, they say yes. Some years, they say maybe. Some years, they say no. In the Atmospheric River example, they did say yes and those were covered. But this year they said no. And we had to find other sources from it, including from discretionary funds from the area director for Shetland Creek, for example.
Director Sarai?
Thank you, Chair. And I know it's been a long day, so I'll keep this short. But I took the opportunity to make an appointment and try to understand the taxation, not only for the TNRD, but more more understanding of the city's role in it. And the city is also going to be doing it. But I just think through it all, from when I first started as an alternate here to now, I think the CFO has done an amazing job to right the ship and get it back to where we understand where the money is and where it's going. And so I know it's 4:30 in the afternoon, but with all due respect, if if you don't understand what she's saying, I think the word gaffle gab or whatever it is, that's just disrespectful. And if you want to bring something forward to change it, then bring it to the board tomorrow. So Director Ranta, if you think that you have a better idea of how to run our finances, bring it to the board so we can vote on it tomorrow. But to take shots at our staff is it's just disrespectful.
Director Sal?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just looking at the crystal ball is saying that there's a decline in revenue because of the TMX and also building forecast and increased competition. Can we look at the other end of the equation? I'm not familiar with the contract with our service product, the contractor. Is it scalable? Can we go back to them and say, hey, you know what? We expect, you know, decrease in in the number of transport loads that you're going to do. Can we adjust our contract and reduce costs there?
Through the chair, good question. Director Sal, I would look at it a different way. I guess I'll answer your question specifically. Yes, we, well, the contract is based on the actual work, so hour for hour or hall for hall. So it's not a flat rate regardless of how much waste is there. In terms of our operating costs, though, that's a decision of the board. So the board set levels of service levels of service before we went out for tender for the last service agreement. So if the board wants to change service, like for example, reduce hours, close transfer stations, et cetera, that the board can bring that up. The budget we're bringing forward is our cost based on the level of service that this board has decided on.
Any other questions on solid waste recycling? All right, we move on to utility services.
Right. I'll keep this one fairly brief because the area directors who are on, who have utilities in their area on the utilities committee. And so could probably do this presentation for me because they, we meet three times a year and talk about this in detail. So Tyrone, our manager of utilities is behind me as well. And this is his world. That hole right there, where was that? That was Savinaw doing some work on the water main there. But this year, I guess an accomplishment and a strength now going forward as of this fall is increased staff capacity. There was a challenge up to this point, but now we have, we're looking forward with a new utility supervisor, Quinn Smith, that came on, joined us from the city of Kamloops. He's been our supervisor since the summer. And we just have two new technicians that just started three weeks ago. So excited to have new young blood, also working with our experienced operators and an opportunity for succession planning there. This is a very small department, six staff that operate the 13 utility systems. In this case, we do, we are seeing an increase in revenue. That is specifically because of the board, through recommendations of the utilities committee, increased our user fees on all the systems. Those rates took effect in the spring of 2024. So a good news there is we are able to make some more substantial contributions towards the reserve and more ability to perform required upgrades and preventative maintenance. And more to come on that, so. But sticking with the positive stuff accomplishments, some major capital project that we just finished is this Black Pines Groundwater Conversion Project. So that's north of Kamloops on West Side Road. Finally, having groundwater flowing through the pipes, clean water, where they've been on and off well water advisories for many, many years from water from the North Thompson. This board just approved funding through CCBF for the Wallasheen Reservoir Replacement that's taking place next year. Engineering's underway. And we've awarded two contracts in Pritchard, one for a new water treatment plant and one for a new sewer plant. So that'll be our first membrane filtration water plant in the community of Pritchard. That should be, well, it's being constructed next year, should be operating by the end of next year is the hope. So the challenges, I talked about our increased revenue, but to be clear, the long-term financial sustainability is not solved with that increased revenue. It definitely is giving us some more breathing room. The biggest issue is the, the increased rates help with our day-to-day operating costs, but they do not address fully the infrastructure deficit of, that, that we have out there. And, and more specifically, any, any additional projects, new capital projects, like a water treatment plant or a reservoir, is still solely reliant on external funding like grants. And that, the, the capital list I went through are basically all grant funded with small contributions from the reserves. So the opportunities, this board's talked about it many times and many UBCM's, third, third in a row now that we've brought this forward as an advocacy piece about a possible provincial pilot project. The ask is simply that the province come up with a mechanism to fund these very small water systems, a mechanism of matching what we're charging for rates to our customers that the province would fund. There's been no clear response on that other than that they seem receptive to it, but no commitment. But still look in that as a positive opportunity in the future. Another opportunity, as we'll continue to talk about this, but prior, the, the, this board has, you know, decided to prioritize TNRD core infrastructure with CCBF funds. And that's the, the new requirements through UBCM that that's where it needs to be allocated. So it's definitely an opportunity, continues to be an opportunity in utilities. Asset management, to Tyrone's credit and his team in this department, we're further along on the asset management journey than in some of their other departments. But incorporating this into a regional organization-wide approach is on the horizon and an opportunity here. New staff, as I mentioned, this is an opportunity going forward, training up the next generation of utility operators. So working on that knowledge transfer and succession planning for pending retirements. Three of our operators, you know, were expecting to retire in the next two to three years. Threats, our last round utility bills went out last week and I have a number of calls that I've received related to that high cost. So the ability and willingness and/or willingness to pay the higher, higher utility rates. And really the comment that I get from residents is they're getting the same level of service as in I still have poor water and why am I paying twice as much or 50% more than I did last year when my service level hasn't improved? So it's a fair, fair argument and it's a challenge, but as this board and the utilities committee is aware of, those rates were required to increase just to maintain the same level of service, but it's not an easy message to deliver. The other big, I'm calling it a threat, could consider an opportunity, definitely a challenge, is the private water system. So we only have 13 systems out there. There's, we don't have a full count. There's probably hundreds of water systems out there that are private systems that are, well, some of them have already knocked on our door. And I think there's many more to come, asking the TNRD to somehow help out and take on their system. We do, I won't get into the details of it, though we do have a board policy around what we do in those cases. And we're actually going through that process with the Paul Lake Water Works System that has requested it. And a feasibility study was done and we'll be speaking to a utilities committee in more detail next month on that. Questions on utilities before we move into the final one, community and emergency services?
All right. Director Smith, Director Grenier, Director Sal?
I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank all of the department heads and all of your staff for what you've done so far. It's, it's no easy feat and it's a hell of a lot of numbers that, that in most cases, most of us can maybe argue over and, and critique, but they all come from a hell of a lot of work as far as I'm concerned. So thank you for that. And on a strong point, I do have a reliable supplier for five-year crystal balls. So if you want to see me after the meeting, I can hook you up.
They don't have to share the same one anymore. That's awesome. Director Grenier?
Thank you Chair, and I echo Director Smith's. We appreciate your work on this. On our utility committee, we, we really bit the bullet this year, I guess at the beginning of the year, and we've, we've followed your recommendations to increase substantially our user fees because it was prudent to do that. We've talked about ways to communicate that to our constituents, particularly the ones that are receiving those increases. And I'm just thinking that, keeping in mind our new, our, our effort to get this new computer system going, remind you that at the end of every calendar year, showing those users the balance that is being built up by those user fees will go a long way for them to understand, we increased your fee so that there would be money in this system to fix things when they break. And I think that transparency will help answer some of the questions that you just put on the board there.
Thank you. Director Sal?
Thank you Madam Chair. Just sharing from the SILGA Infrastructure Deficit and Asset Management Seminar, about the threats of, you know, residents complaining why rates go up while the service levels are the same. One of the advice or the, one of the modules was communication. Early and often, I think for municipal members, I guess you would have to go back to your staff about the communication plan with your communities. But with the TNRD, maybe we, perhaps Colton, we can work on something while us electits can do our part by, you know, community meetings, explain earlier on why these things are going up, you know, and stuff. Yeah, thank you. Just.
Thank you. All right. Community and Emergency Services?
So this is the grab bag department of everything and anything that's not in any of the other departments that have already been talked about. So it'll seem a little random, but again, I'm just trying to highlighting the pieces that are impacting the budget. Definitely a big component is our emergency operations center. So that was a, a strength and an accomplishment of this department. Once again, we were activated for a prolonged period of time. It was about two months straight that there was multiple bodies in that new EOC room on the third floor. First activated on Canada Day around the Savinaw flooding and stayed maintained open during fire activation through Shetland Creek, Dunn Lake Fire. And there's still recovery work ongoing. A definite strength here is our, our staff and our capacity here. We've been, we've built in, I mean, for better for worse, we have a lot of experience responding to emergencies and we've been able to give staff opportunity to, and from different departments, opportunity to participate in the EOC, get training. And especially this year, we found, you know, we had a lot, quite a few new staff over the last few years. But this year, we kind of a core group of staff that once we got in there this year, it was kind of just old hat carrying on for where we left off last year. And it just makes that much smoother when everyone knows what they're doing. So still take opportunities to train new staff, but we have an awesome core group of people there. Parks Use Bylaw, that's something that was adopted by the board this year. This, there hasn't been a lot of enforcement work done, but this was kind of a gap in our services. We have a bunch of parks, but no actual enforceable bylaws around off-leash dogs or camping, things like that. So that is now a tool in the toolbox if and when we need to use it. Smith Pioneer Park, I had to mention that because this board got to see the, see it this summer. And I think everyone had a turn on the, the zip line there. So that's been a multiple years project funded through CCBF funding through area M and N, a project managed by our community services coordinators. Parks and Trail Strategy, this board's heard about that. It began this year and will continue on until next summer. And it's a, I'm excited about that project. It's going to give us a staff some more clear direction from the board in terms of what direction we're going with the park services. Dangerous Dog Control, that lives in this department as well. We've switched a year and a half ago to be doing that in-house with our bylaw officer. So our bylaw officer Darren, who looks after the mandatory recycling bylaw, also looks after the dangerous dog control complaints. And that's been definitely a huge strength, having that expertise in-house. Just being able to flex and respond based on urgency and priorities and more efficient because we were contracting out those services at essentially a fixed rate before, regardless of how many calls or complaints we got. Weaknesses, kind of back to the Parks and Trail Strategy discussion. The challenge is really our prioritization of mostly electoral area specific projects. I've had many conversations with many of you in the room and there's lots of great ideas of projects, way more ideas and projects than we have time or resources to, to do. And so that's why with the Parks, one specifically Parks and Trail Strategy, trying to get some direction from the board of how to prioritize there and what to tackle. And I, I admit, I get excited about these projects that I hear, but then I think in the back of my mind, okay, but we have no capacity to do this new thing, even though it's a great idea. We've been challenged just with some provincial permitting and tenure issues. Working on an issue in Pritchard around the beach and trying to create some tenure there and just the, the time it takes to do that, as well as this, the committee, the whole, or no, the Electoral Area Director Committee heard about our highway entrance sign project that's been delayed due to some tenure permit challenges. Opportunities, again, this, similar to in other areas, prioritizing TNRD core infrastructure with that CCBF funding is definitely has been relied on for a lot of the services in this department in the past and will continue to be or, and, and is included in the capital plan to be using CCBF funding towards a lot of these assets. Again, back to assets, asset management in this department is also needed and an opportunity and priority. There's significant assets out there that aren't part of a wholesome system. Parks and Trail Strategy, I mentioned that as a strength, but also an opportunity going forward to really guide what we're doing long-term. And Dangerous Dog Control Bylaw, this came forward as a notice of motion from Director Smith. And a report will be coming to the board in the second meeting in November, looking at expanding that to include the three electoral areas that are not presently included. Our mosquito control contract, those are out for tender actually right now. That contract, five-year contract expires at the end of this year. So we're expecting to bring a recommendation to the board in the new year for a new contract award there. Threats in this department, climate change definitely is impacting this department in terms of the number of days our emergency operations center is active and the time of year the emergency center is active. I mean, I always think back to when I left my position as the solid waste manager and moved into the, what was called the time deputy general manager operations and, and took on the emergency role. My first day there was the atmospheric river. And Kevin, who, Kevin, who was the emergency program manager at the time, was on vacation on Vancouver Island and all the highways were closed and couldn't get back. But thinking, oh yeah, it's safe for emergency program manager to take November, a holiday in November, but these days you never know when something's going to happen. So we, I think we had a little pool going of when, when the first fire would be activated this year too. And lots of people are guessing in April. So that's the new world we live in. The Emergency Disaster Management Act, we've talked about that at this board. The act has been adopted, but there's still regulations to come and we're still waiting to see exactly how this is going to impact us in regional districts. Our concerns we've brought forward to this board before is the way it reads is that we're now, we as regional districts are now responsible for a whole bunch of things that we weren't responsible for before. And how do we actually achieve that, like hazard assessments in the entire TNRD? How do we assess all the hazards in the TNRD? It's a little different scope and scale than municipal boundaries. And then how do we fund this work? On our invasive plant program, I'm listing this as a threat because it often comes up from the public and, and the directors on the table probably hear about it. It's been a while now and, and many on this board weren't aware, but there was a push from this board about 10 years ago to take a greater role of leading in terms of invasive plant management throughout the regional district, including on lands that aren't our jurisdiction. So on highways, on Crown provincial land, things like that. So at that point, we expanded our program, increased funding to hire staff, and then essentially offered ourselves to coordinate work on provincial land. Like essentially on contract with the province. And so we continue to do that. But now, and I'm not saying this is a bad thing, but just so that everyone's aware, the, the concern is when the province, depending on how much the province funds for work on highways, for example, it's the TNRD doing the work. So the less money we have, the less work that we can do on highways. And then we get blamed for not doing enough work. So it's just a, a concern there. And, and specifically this program is not, there's no core funding from the province to invasive plants. So again, back to this famous crystal ball we keep talking about during budget cycle. Colleen, our invasive plant manager, she needs to essentially, based on unofficial discussions with provincial staff, guess of what the budget might be at the year, in March of next year, that they're, we're going to get for operational dollars this year. And then we often have to adjust that at final budget time. So anyway, well, just something to be aware of. Happy to chat offline more about invasive plants for those who are interested. And that's all.
All right. Any questions on the everything else category? Okay, the dog pound, anything on the dog pound? Anyone have any questions, comments? No? All right. Well, thank you very much to everyone who presented for giving us lots and lots and lots of stuff to think about and for clarifying a lot of things and for preparing the way for what I suspect will be a fruitful discussion tomorrow morning. Just a reminder, we start at eight thirty, eight thirty, not nine. So eight thirty we start. I know, Director Morris, I share your pain. Oh, your dog feels, I share your dog's pain as well. Talk about the dog pound. There will be lunch between the the two meetings because, of course, we have the board meeting at one thirty. So just let everyone know that lunch will be provided tomorrow. And I understand that CAO Helderbrand wants to say a few words before we go into the longest recess in TNRD history.
Thank you, Chair Roden, and I promise to be quick. I just wanted to thank everyone for, I what I felt was a very successful first half day of budget discussions. I think this SWOT analysis is something that's valuable, and it seems like it is based on the great questions and feedback and things that we're we're discussing. I know Chair Roden mentioned this at the beginning, but just a friendly reminding reminder that regarding, this is the staff's proposed budget. This is what we've worked extremely hard on to provide, a very well thought out professional budget. And I think that your questions, we welcome them, welcome them. We even, we even welcome really tough, hard questions. So please bring them tomorrow because we are going to be talking more about the numbers. But if individual directors do want to see changes, as Chair Roden said, simply share your feedback, propose a a motion to the board, and the board will then direct staff on how to do that. That's how the process works, and we are glad to get that feedback and go whatever direction you would like to go. But overall, I think it was a great day, and there's, like I said, some excellent questions and feedback, and I appreciate that. And then Carla, did you have anything you wanted to mention you said?
Yeah, I'll keep it short and sweet as well. So I also want to thank everybody. Thank you very much for your participation. I know it is long and hard to endure these long meetings that we do, breaking it up in two parts. I'm hoping is helpful to tomorrow's component when we get into the numbers. We we have a hard budget ahead of us. We have hard conversations. And just like we don't always agree in building the budget, we bring diverse opinions to building a balanced approach to you guys. You have the final say. We will continue to interact respectfully with all of you and work through hard discussions and decisions together. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We are in recess until eight thirty tomorrow morning. Have a good evening.